Council members, please indicate when you're ready.
I'm ready. You ready? Councilman Washington is ready.
Thank you.
You ready, Mark? I don't know if the clerk is ready. I don't know if the clerk is ready.
I'll call the meeting to order. Regular city council meeting for May 17, 2022. Please rise and join me at the Plagiarial Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mark Joseph.
Here.
Councilmember David Oro.
Here.
Councilmember Pierre Washington.
Here.
Vice Mayor Miriam Abadamos is excused. And Mayor Leon Garcia.
Here. Thank you. Report on closed session, confirmation of reportable action. Mr. Ross?
Mayor and council members, members of the public, your council convened an open session at 5:00 PM to address the matters agendized for closed session consideration with respect to each of the matters, and there are four. It will do a written report upon return from closed session, consistent with Government Code Section 54957.1. You conclude it at 6:40 PM. That would conclude the report unless there are questions.
Any questions from council members? No. Seeing none, thank you, Mr. Ross. We'll move on with our proclamations and presentations. Given the audience in attendance, I would suggest to council that we move on with our National Public Works Week recognition first. Objection? No objections. Well, great to have you all here today to celebrate the work you do that makes this such a great city, and it's very much appreciated value. Y'all can come up to the podium if you want. I am. Yeah, it's right here. Very good. Okay. It's my honor to do this. Wow, we got, thank you for coming. Thank you. You know, we really value the work you do in this city. And you do an awful lot to make this such an awesome place to live. So, thank you. Okay, City of American Canyon proclamation, May 15 to 21, 2022, National Public Works Week. Whereas, public works professionals are behind the scenes employees who focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to our community. And their work is essential for public health, quality of life, safety, and well-being of the people of the City of American Canyon. Whereas, the City of American Canyon infrastructure, facilities, services could not be provided and maintained without the efforts of our public work professionals. And whereas the City of American Canyon Public Works and Maintenance and Utilities Department workforce are a diverse, hard-working group of dedicated first responders, including engineers, supervisors, lead workers, maintenance workers, mechanics, technicians, and water and wastewater operators, who are responsible for maintaining, improving, and protecting our city streets, creeks, water treatment, wastewater treatment, public buildings, parks, landscaping, and structures, and facilities essential for the sustainability of American Canyon. And whereas it is the public interest for the residents, students, business owners, and community leaders in the City of American Canyon to understand the vital importance of public works and to support the success of public works programs in our community. And whereas the year 2022 marks the 62nd Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by American Public Works Association, it is the pleasure of the City of American Canyon to again join with the APWA to recognize and commend all public works professionals in the City of American Canyon and throughout the state of California. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Leon Garcia, Mayor, City of American Canyon, on behalf of the American Canyon City Council, to hereby proclaim this week, May 15 through May 21, 2022, as National Public Works Week in the City of American Canyon, and call upon all residents to recognize and give thanks for all the contributions the city public works professionals make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Congratulations. Thank you. All right, thank you. Thank you. It's truly kind of the very unseen part of services that our public work staff provide. And we know about it when something's not working. And we certainly appreciate your rapid response. I mean, the efficiency of which you work. Thank you very much from all of us.
Thank you. Eric Almond Smithy is Public Works Director. I'll let Felix Hernandez, Maintenance Utilities Director, speak a little bit, but I just want to say it's always humbling experience working with the men and women in this department and our sister, our brother department, sibling department. Stumbling there. But I think, whatever, the ready and resilient motto established by the American Public Works Association this year really says it all. It's been a tough five years, let alone the last couple of years of COVID. So, I think it's the perfect motto, and thank you for celebrating these teams up here.
Yes, good evening, Felix Hernandez, Maintenance Utilities Director. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. A huge thank you to staff. I think the staff, obviously, they're the backbone of this thing. They're the ones out there beating the streets, got boots on the ground. So, a huge thank you to those folks, the support that we get from the community as well. And also to Director Smithy's, the relationship that we have with public works is just, it's imperative, and I really appreciate the work she does and working with her. So, thank you.
Thank you. You guys are awesome. We cannot thank you enough. We really appreciate your work.
Mayor Garcia, we did have a member of the community that asked to say a few words on this proclamation.
Please go ahead.
Karina Servente.
Thank you. So, this is an email I sent on May 2 to the director manager. And so, it says, "High Public Works Manager and Members of Councils, Saturday afternoon, there was a small fire in the upper side of the Montevino Eastment. Two American Canyon Fire Department engines were at the site putting out the fire that I was told was on the Solano side. I am so appreciative of the American Canyon Fire Department for always being ready and able to care, to take care of emergencies. The main reason I'm writing is to let you know of the amazing work public work staff, Felix Hernandez and his crew did. They had just cleared a five-foot-plus weeds on that eastment a couple of weeks ago. It was a hard task. They did a great job clearing all the weeds. Had they not done so, we would have had a totally worse outcome. Saturday was windy and dry. I want to thank Public Works and the American Canyon Fire Department for all you do and for keeping our neighborhood safe. So, thank you so much for doing such a spectacular job day in and day out. So, thank you. We appreciate you."
Thank you, council. Move on to our next one. I'd like to take up the Memorial Day proclamation. City of American Canyon proclamation. Historic Preservation, May 2022. Whereas the National Park Services Register of Historic Places is authorized by the National Historic Preservation Act of 1996, National Registration Programs coordinates and supports public and private efforts to identify, evaluate, and adopt reuse America's historic, cultural, and archaeological resources. Whereas... Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on the Preservation Act one. Oh, I've got it stacked in the wrong way. All right. Timeout. Restart. We'll get it right. Memorial Day, City of American Canyon proclamation, Memorial Day, May 21, 2022. Thank you, Councilmember Oro. Whereas on Memorial Day, we undertake our solemn duty to remember the courageous men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice in defense of our country and the cause of freedom around the world. Whereas, as we honor those who answer the call of duty, we understand and appreciate the values of patriotism, citizenship, commitment, and honor and duty. And whereas, when we consider their sacrifice, we must never forget that freedom comes at a cost. And we are the beneficiaries of their sacrifice. And whereas, even though the loss of a fallen hero can never be replaced, Memorial Day is an opportunity for all of us to recognize and honor our Gold Star families through faith, love, and peace. And whereas the American Canyon Troop Support, VFW Post 1123, American Canyon Lions Club, American Canyon Middle Schools Coral Assembly, Downey Elementary Perfect Rescueers, and Napa Sheriff Honor Guard, various community leaders and members will be gathering in remembrance at Veterans Memorial Park on May 31, 2022, for a Memorial Day celebration. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Leon Garcia, Mayor, City of American Canyon, on behalf of the City Council, do proclaim Monday, May 31, 2022, as Memorial Day, a day for paying our respects and honoring the men and women who gave their lives, serving our country, and to their families who continue to honor their memory and legacy. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I could?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
As a veteran myself, that's a very important time to recognize what our military people have done. And it's more than just a three-day weekend where you sit behind a pool and barbecue and just have fun with the families. Memorial Day is a solemn day, and it's a day that we can give thanks for the men and women who died for us. And I just ask that we keep those veterans in prayer. Many of them are still alive that served back in the day. And we have new veterans today that are being deployed and that are serving and protecting us as we sit in this chamber today. So, just keep them all in prayer, and I hope to see everybody come out to Memorial Day. It was a really, really good time last year, some testimonials, and a moment where, if you have a veteran in your family, that you could walk up and recognize that veteran. The flag will be at half-mast that day, as it is today for the victims of COVID. So, just, it's a near and dear time for me, especially as a veteran, and I just invite you all to come out. So, thank you for letting me share, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Washington, and thank you for your service and all of those who have served our country, particularly those present as well at this time. National Historic Preservation Month, May 22. American Canyon City Proclamation. Whereas the National Park Service Registry of Historical Places is authorized by National Historic Preservation Act of 1966, the National Register Program coordinates and supports public and private efforts to identify, evaluate, protect, and adapt or reuse America's historic, cultural, and archaeological resources. And whereas in 1973, May was designated as Preservation Month to raise awareness of historical preservation and the continuity it builds between the past, present, and future, to instill national and community pride, promote heritage tourism, and show social and economic and environmental benefits of historical preservation. Whereas Napa County is home to irreplaceable historic resources, including stone bridges, 19th-century wineries, Victoria-era commercial buildings, our WPA-era post office, as well as architectural design resonance. And where Snapper County Landmarks, NCL, founded in 1974 by John Whitridge, a nonprofit organizer, organization that fosters appreciation and preservation of historic buildings, sites, and districts through education programs, public policy, research, and technical assistance. And whereas NCL creates community discussion and preservation of our historic resources to protect and reuse them, create jobs, stabilize property values, and preserve existing housing stock. And whereas throughout the year, NCL creates awareness of historic preservation through the Home, Holiday Home Tour, annual preservation awards, walking tours of historic areas, as well as the creation of the Ten Threatened Treasures, a list of historic places facing neglect and potential demolition. And whereas NCL provides a high school scholarship to promote interest in Napa County history in our local youth, as well as distributes a Napa coloring book free to the Napa Unified School District third graders in Napa County. And whereas annually, NCL recognizes Napa County preservation through the Preservationist of the Year Award and awards a merit to honor those who have restored existing buildings at least 50 years old or have rehabilitated or adapted a historic building or site for new use. And now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Leon Garcia, Mayor, City of American Canyon, along with the American Canyon City Council, do hereby proclaim May as Historic Preservation Month and call on our citizens to support preservation and Napa County landmark efforts to preserve the rich history of Napa. In American Canyon.
Mayor Garcia, we have Napa County Landmarks Board President Ernie Schlobom, Schlobm? Here to accept if you come to the podium, sir?
Sir? Thank you. Let me put my coat here. Get my hair on straight. Don't go like this. Can't see. Hold up. Hold up. Thank you very much for being here. Haven't seen you in ages. It takes us back to Red Cross days. Yeah.
After 10 years of retired.
Oh, good. Good to have you.
This evening.
Yeah.
Do my best to April.
Thank you. Thank you. Let's see. What do we have left here? We have proclamation. Acknowledging May as Asian and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islanders Heritage Month. City of American Canyon proclamation. Whereas this May, during Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month, we recognize the history and achievements of Asian Americans, Native Americans, and Pacific Islanders, AANHPI. Across the nation, we reflect on the tradition of leadership, resilience, courage shown by AAPI communities and recommend, recommend it to the struggle of AAPIN equity. Whereas Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders make up our nations more vibrant through diversity of culture, language, and religions. There's no single story of the AANHPI experience, but rather a diversity of contributions that enrich America's culture and society, and strengthen the United States' role as a global leader. The American story as we know it would be impossible without the strength, contributions, and legacy of the AANHPI, who have helped build and unite this country and each successive generation. And whereas despite the strength shown and successes of achieved AANHPI, communities have faced a systemic battery of economic justice, health equity, educational attainment, and personal safety. We recognize that the high fear felt by many Asian Americans contributes to the wake of increasing rates of anti-Asian harassment and violence. We will continue to stand shoulder to shoulder with the AANHPI citizens of our community to condemn denouncing and preventing these acts of violence. We will continue to look for opportunities to heal together and fight against all racism. Whereas we affirm that Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders make our community stronger, we urge our friends, neighbors, and people in our community to join us this month in celebrating AANHPI history, people, and cultures. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Leon Garcia, on behalf of the City of American Canyon, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Asian American and Native Hawaiian Pacific Islander Heritage Month. I call upon the people of American Canyon to learn more about the history of Asian Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Pacific Islanders, and to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities. Thank you. If someone to receive? Clarence Mamarillo, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Garcia and City Council. I'll put on my flag, Philippians Student Wellness Hat, and I'm also on, a member of the Filipino-American community of American Canyon. I'm reminded that a year ago, we had our Asian Solidarity Rally. All of you were there. I'm heartbroken that a year later, we're still continuing the struggle. But where I take immense comfort, both as an Asian American and as a resident of American Canyon, is that this community supports everyone regardless of race, creed, religion, gender. So, we're safe here, and I'm amazed by that. So, I'm happy to accept the proclamation on behalf of the Asian American community in American Canyon.
Thank you for that. I know someone at home is going to be very proud about too. That being said, we now have a presentation, Parks and Community Services, CAPRCBM, recognition award. And this is a recommendation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I am here this evening to recognize and to present all to you that our Parks and Community Services Commission received the 2021 Outstanding Commissioner Board Award from the California Association of Parks and Recreation Commissioners and Board Members, which is also referred to as CAR, CAPRCBM. This is a professional organization that provides commissioners and board members opportunities to exchange ideas, forge personal and professional relationships, and demonstrates leadership in our community. The City of American Canyon's Parks and Community Services Commission, also referred as PCS, was formed in 1999. Currently, on the commission, we have our Chair, Kristin Einberger, Vice Chair, Karina Servente, Commissioners, Clarence Mamarillo, Gina Griggs, and Kathy Margalotti. I have learned in my short period of time working for the City of American Canyon how passionate and fortunate we are to have all five of these individuals supporting us. They have shown me that they truly believe in everything that we do, and they are here for our community, that they value our parks, recreation, open space, and trails. They continue to put community first, providing their knowledge, expertise, and advice to help guide the city on providing high-quality, engaging, and fun programs and services. In 2021, the previous Parks and Recreation Director applied for the Outstanding Commissioner Board Award. And in 2022, we received the fantastic news that they are awarded this award. So, on behalf of myself, who has been here for four months, I would like to take this opportunity and recognize our commission for receiving the 2021... Hold on. Outstanding Commissioner Board Award. Thank you. So... With us this evening, we do have two of our commissioners. We have our Vice Chair, Karina, who's in person, and we also have our Commissioner, Clarence. And then via Zoom, we have Gina, and we have Kristin, our Chair. So, would you guys like to come up and take a picture with the mayor and the rest of the council members?
Go on up. I can come around there too. It's always good to recognize accomplishments, and a lot of people just did that voluntarily, just for a betterment of the community. And that's one thing that makes American Canyon great. Totally. A lot of volunteer effort here. Okay, we'll move on to our agenda now. Public comments on items not on the agenda. There will be ample time for each item as it comes up to comment. So, anyone in present having a public comment, please come forward to the podium.
Mayor Garcia, I have four speaker cards.
Okay, very good. Thank you. I don't know in order they are. Public comment, public comment, public comment, public comment. Okay. Michelle Lakey? Hope I have your name right? Good evening. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I am here on behalf of the Community Cats of American Canyon and the people who want to help them. Community members are asking for help on local social media, including our Facebook groups and Nextdoor. People are seeing free-roaming cats, pregnant cats, or finding kittens in their yards. Also, there have been complaints of cats fighting, bullying, and just being a general nuisance. This is typical behavior of unaltered male cats. As one of the people... help, and this right here, each red dot indicates an area of our city where unhoused cats are in need of spay and neuter services. This only represents a portion of the help that is needed. This number will continue to grow if we don't act now. American Canyon has certified trappers, myself included, who are happy to volunteer our time. We are unable to provide this service, though, without resources. City residents are desperate for your help. Please remember this map of our city filled with red dots when it comes time to renew the contract with the Napa County Animal Shelter. American Canyon needs a specific guaranteed allocation for the spaying and neutering of our feral cats, not the hit or miss that we have now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could you make a, should we get a copy of that?
Yeah.
For the map, please.
Absolutely.
The Napa Register, I just, I get my copy, so I'm delayed.
If you could bring it to me, if you could leave it with me, I can make a copy of it.
Delayed because it's mailed, but I just saw an article where they received, I think, I hope I got it correct, about 75,000, enough for spay-and-neuter programs. And I think the article said something like 420 some odd cats could be taken care of that way. So, I look forward to us being able to connect with them with your help. Thank you. Next is Sylvia Cadet. Do I have that correct?
Good evening, and welcome. Thank you, Mayor and City Council.
Maybe if you could lower the microphone a little closer to you there, so we could hear you.
For the last two years, I've been trying to find help with some cats that adopted our backyard. And the thing is, is the mother comes in heat, and then she has the babies, and maybe, like four babies, maybe one of them survives. And then when she's in heat, I noticed that a lot of the male cats have collars on them. So, it's not just the wild cats mating with wild cats. And it's heartache to see what they're going through. And just this last week, I was introduced to Rose because of my neighbor, an incident she had with some kittens. But the point is, is the mothers have such a hard time, the wild mothers, and they struggle. And cats are very important. They kill mice. I mean, they're made for a purpose. So, the resources, if there could be more resources, that's all we're asking for, more help, more awareness, because for dogs, they have to be neutered, or they have, you know, when they come from the pound, to go out. And so, we feel that there needs, I feel, that the responsibility of homeowners that have cats that let them roam, if there could be something done for, you know, to get them fixed, because it's not just the wild cats, it's the domestic cats that, you know, they're not prejudiced against wild or, you know what I'm saying? But just thank you for your time, and I appreciate if you could help. Okay.
Well, thank you for what you're doing with this issue. Thank you. Next up is Rose Negrete.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Rose Negrete, and I've been here before. I just want to represent the cats of American Canyon, and I would like to ask for more spay-and-neuter guaranteed appointments for the cats of American Canyon when you renew the contract with the Napa County Animal Shelter. And if the fire department is here represented, I would just like to thank you for helping people in our community, but also to that one person or several of you that helped that cat that was trapped, and you got him out of that gutter, or whatever it was. When I saw that, I was ready to go down there. I was like, okay, I was trying to locate that person who had posted that to try and go, and my husband's like, what are you going to do? I'm like, I don't know, but I'm going to go. And later on, you know, a couple hours later, I saw that they had been taken care of. So, thank you very much for providing the help to our community, our human community, and our friends. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And applause, and thank you to American Canyon Fire District. Mr. Hawley, could we look into the date when our contract is renewed, or status of that?
Yes, Mayor, we intend on bringing that back on June 21st. As part of our budget process, we have a number of annual renewals of contracts, and that item specifically will be there.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Don't look forward to that meeting on the 21st of June. Next, there would be Rose Maldonado.
Good evening, everyone, City Council and committee members. Happy to be here today. My name is Rose Maldonado, and someone asked me earlier, is this about cats again? Yes, it's about cats again, because we still have a problem. So, I'm a resident of American Canyon. I've been here for over 10 years. My comment today will be brief, but I have previously submitted comments related to the importance and really the need that we have here in American Canyon regarding our community cats. As the weather has been getting warmer, as you may have noticed, we have also started to see and will continue to see the population of community cats drastically increase. So, this is common everywhere, but as a resident of this city, I'm asking once again for your support with spay and neuter services for our community cats. We continue to see multiple requests daily from residents talking about feral cats, injured cats, kittens being born on the streets, pregnant cats roaming our streets. Community cats are suffering and dying out there. The only way to reduce this ever-growing population is really through spay and neuter. So, the problem is that we don't have the resources, as we have heard already from the other members. So, even if we're lucky and we're able to get an appointment with a local vet, it's very expensive. So, my call to action today is really, you know, it's my understanding that this contract that we have, that our city has with the Napa County Animal Shelter, will be reviewed in June. So, during that review, I would like to request that more spay and neuter services are made available to American Canyon via more appointments or funding that we really need. So, we desperately need more spay and neuter services in our city. We need full support from our city leaders, you, to help us and to recognize that spay-and-neuter services are also known as trap return, neuter and return program. It's not only effective to control the population, but it is a humane process. It really works as it sounds. Cats are, you know, humanely captured, they are spayed or neutered, they are vaccinated, they are ear-tipped, which means they're easy to be identified, and they are returned to their outdoor homes, but they will not be able to continue to make more babies. So, our community cats need our help, and I've said it again, and I'll say it again over and over, supporting spay-and-neuter initiatives would be a win-win for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councils, a medium, we could probably take this up as a future agenda item.
I do have two callers on Zoom that would like to comment.
Okay.
I have Tammy Wong. Go ahead, Tammy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I wanted to echo what the previous public speakers have said about our community cats. As a resident, I really would like to encourage the city to allocate resources to help with the spay and neuter of our community cats, to encourage our residents to get their cats spayed and neutered, because we'd like to address this problem now before it grows out of bounds and we see too many free-roaming cats just taking over. And I also wanted to point out, at our earlier council meeting a while back, when we were talking about our volunteer program, and I know some of the council members wanted to grow it, not the number of hours that volunteers are doing, all these people that are doing trap, neuter, vaccinate, return, those are volunteers, and they're volunteering for the city. So, we should be capturing all of those efforts, and that will also, you know, elevate the profile of our volunteers in the city and what everyone is doing to make our city better. So, just tossing that out there, that's a missed opportunity. And the other reason that I wanted to make a comment to you tonight, and it's been a while since this has been a topic of my comments to you, each of you should have received an email with an update about our traffic calming pilot project on Wetlands Edge Road. And if you haven't seen it yet, I just wanted to give a shout out and highlight, prior to the pilot project, only 28% of the cars were driving at or under the speed limit, 28%. Most of the cars were speeding. Now, with the speed cushions, over 90% of the southbound traffic and 75% of the northbound traffic are driving at or under the speed limit. This is a fantastic improvement. We still have isolated instances of seaters, but it's less than 1% going over 35 miles per hour. On behalf of all of my neighbors, we are all very thrilled with this. We give a shout out to our partners in the Public Works Department who made this possible, and of course, to our city leadership. Since the pilot project has proven successful, you know, we all want to hear the next step. How do we, you know, continue on with the rest of Wetlands Edge Road, as was the plan when we first met with the Public Works Director back then, Steve Hartwig?
Tammy, 20-second warning.
Thank you. So, I hopefully, you know, we can find out what the next steps are, because we're all interested. Thank you, and have a great evening.
Thank you. Next speaker.
I have Justin Hamilton-Hole. Go ahead, Justin.
Good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
And our chairs, I'm just, I'm not going to go over the topic. I want to shout out our C Partner Rack. We are new leader. I'm so proud of her, that the end, so probably I see her when we start for July. I so proud our partner, Partner Rack people. I'm so, I'm very happy our C counting and our C clerk, all of our people doing a great job in there, and I'm so happy that we are in person, I'm so happy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin.
Any other speakers?
I have no other cards, but it looks like we have a couple who would like to speak over here.
They will take a public comment from those present.
I didn't know I had to get a card. I'm so new at this. So, American Canyon Little League is going to have their very first home run hoedown. It's a fun night of fundraising for American Canyon Little League, Saturday, May 21st, this Saturday, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. at American Canyon Little League Fields. There will be bull ride, traditional games, food and drinks, live band, DJ, silent auction, and lots more. So, did you hear that we're going to have a mechanical bull ride? TikTok American Canyon is going to go off the hook. I'll be posting. So, it's adults only, $40 per person or 70 per couple, includes dinner, a drink, or a ticket for the bull, mechanical bull ride, and if you wear country-western attire, you earn an extra raffle ticket. So, it's our very first one, and we're really excited, and we wish that all our community and everybody join us. So, you can just, what? Yes, so we got very techie. There's a QR code, and then you can get your tickets there. Or you can see me.
What are the hours again?
I'm sorry?
What is the event hours again?
Oh, Saturday, May 21st, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. at American Canyon Little League Fields. You'll see the big tent there, and I left a bunch right here, and then I already gave people stuff. Thank you so much to our sponsors, and, well, since I have time, I want to piggyback on what Tammy Wong said about the coming in the wetlands, and I would really love to see some more of that traffic coming at other areas in our city, especially around our schools. And I know I have talked to our awesome chief and our council members and mayor about other out-of-the-box ideas on how to prevent accidents while our kids are crossing, but there are, you know, and the chief knows, the red areas where traffic is, it's an issue. So, I would like to see some of that coming measures in the whole city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and everyone in attendance. My name is Clarence Mamaril, American Canyon resident, and I'm here as new to the American Canyon Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. A public service announcement tomorrow, Wednesday, May 18th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. there is a chamber mixer. Everyone is invited, don't have to have a business, or, you know, everyone is invited. And while we do not have a mechanical bull, we will have live music and refreshments, and you'll get a chance to check out Adobe Lumber, which is, that's the site of the social, and it's next door to the American Canyon Wellness Center. They do want to emphasize that Adobe Lumber is not for, it's for everybody, it's not just for commercial contractors. You can go in there and check out what they have. Also, I believe Mendoza Plumbing is, will be there as well. So, once again, tomorrow, May 18th, at Adobe Lumber, Chamber, American Canyon Chamber of Commerce, mixer, social, light refreshments, live music, food, enjoy, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the announcement. Thank you. Is there another speaker?
I have no other speakers, but I do want to mention that we did receive one written comment on public comments, items not on the agenda, from Jason Kishinoff.
Thank you. Other public caller?
Beth Marcus, I just, I can't, I don't want to be remiss, last city council, when I came up, I said it was the National Firefighters Week, but this week was the Police Officers' Week, so I want to congratulate the chief here and to thank you for all that you do for our city, for taking care of the incident the other day that turned out to be not an incident, which is great. So, thank you for all you do.
Next speaker, please.
Fran Lemus. I thank Beth for bringing it up, but Highway 29 is really getting bumpy, and I'm wondering if the city contracts, contacts the state to work on the highway, Caltrans. It's really bumpy, I don't know if it's, I have an old car, but it's still got new tires, and it's in the fast lane, and I wonder if the citizens could contact them, would that help, maybe smooth out the highway a little bit?
You can always contact your elected officials in Sacramento.
The uh police officers week, so I'd wanna congratulate the chief here and to thank you for all that you do for our city. For um taking care of the incident the other day that turned out to be not an incident, which is great. So thank you for all you do.
Next speaker, please.
Uh, Fran Lemus. Um, I thank Beth for bringing it up, but a highway twenty nine is really getting bumpy. And I'm wondering if the city contracts uh contacts the um. The state to work on the highway, Caltrans. Um, it's really bumpy. I don't, I don't know if it's, I have an old car, but it's still got new tires. And it's in the fast lane and I wonder if the citizens could contact him. Would that help? Maybe smooth out the highway a little bit.
You can always contact your elected officials in Sacramento.
And the other question I have, I thank Jason for my street sign Hess Road, which says Hess Drive. So I'm wondering if that makes it. My address is changed. But it says Hess Drive. Thank you. And it's good to see everybody here.
We'll check it out, Fran. Well, thank you. Thank you for those who attended. Is there any other public comment this evening? All right, you seem to have a dwindling audience, but we'll proceed. Okay, we'll close public hearing at this time, move on to uh. Our consent calendar. If there's no item to be pulled, I'll accept a motion to. Prove the consent calendar. Council member Washington.
Yeah, not, yeah, I don't want to pull anything from um the consent calendar, but I wanted to add, uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could. Is that I would like to um have a moment of silence at the conclusion of our city council meeting tonight uh for the ten people that were killed in Buffalo.
Thank you, that's very appropriate.
It's uh no secret uh that this instance uh occurred against African Americans in our country and they're being hunted down. Uh, with the end goal of creating a race war. And I just want to bring it to awareness and have people be mindful uh that it still exists and that we need to work together to combat racism in our country.
Thank you for the thought. Please raise that the the committee. We have council committee reports, future agenda items. Thank you. Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll move to adopt a consent calendar.
Okay, is there a second? Motion second. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Council member Joseph?
Yes.
Council member Oro?
Yes.
Council member Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia.
Yes, thank you, counsel. Moving on in our agenda, public hearings, there is none this evening. Business item number fourteen, proposed fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three budget.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, Finance Director Lincoln Bogart is gonna come up and give the presentation. It's the first in a multi-step process for the budget for upcoming fiscal year. Uh, I believe Lincoln has a presentation for you. Um, as a reminder, this already went to the finance committee last Thursday. Uh, take it away, Lincoln. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of council and members of the community. Uh, today I'd like to discuss our proposed budget and where we're at in the process right now towards recommending a budget for council adoption. Uh, we began the preparation of the budget in January and we brought a preliminary general fund only discussion to council on April fifth. As uh city manager Holly mentioned, we did present to the finance subcommittee this past Thursday. Tonight, we'll be looking at both the budget and also have a look at the key performance indicators that are going into the budget. And then our recommended budget will be brought for uh council consideration for adoption on June twenty first. So a little background, when it comes to property taxes. One might think that a lot of money goes into property taxes, but if you look at the dollar bill up here, only twenty nine cents out of every dollar in property taxes. For the city go to or for residents of American Canyon, go to the city. Fifty one cents goes to the school districts, for example. So it is a a s- a smaller piece. Then uh, for example, looking at the sales tax allocation. There's a seven point seven five percent sales tax in the city of American Canyon. Of that seven point seven five percent, one percent or one cent of that seven point seven five goes to the city. There is another half cent in green for the measure T. That is a gas tax and we do get a piece of that, but not all of that half percent. That is allocated across the entire county. So we might look at the state of California's coffers and say, why are they in such a good shape? Uh, their general fund gets over half of the sales tax dollars for our city. We get one uh, one seven seven. One seven point seven five. Uh, and theirs comes from statewide. So they also have other uh state funds in there that are also funded. Getting into some key revenue assumptions for the general fund, a lot of these are fairly similar to the last meeting in April. Our property tax, we are forecasting a three point eight percent increase from this fiscal year. Uh, sales tax, about one point two percent after the three hundred thousand revision that I mentioned. Um, in the April meeting. Transient occupancy tax experienced a large rebound this year, so next year we're expecting another two point six percent increase. And then card room, business license and T bid, uh, which is the tourism business improvement district. Were increasing by about six point four percent. I am happy to state that. Based on some updated numbers, it looks like our card room estimates were lower than uh what we actually expect. So that will change before the uh recommended budget in June. Uh, other estimates uh are weighted as a either a four-year average or an average dollar growth year over year for the last four years. It's uh. It's it's weighted in that way because there was a recession in that period. Uh, however, uh, with the interest rates rising and the environment that we're in, the uncertainty, we're expecting a a a slowdown. Uh, in the next year. So we are projecting a slowdown. Uh, followed by a moderate recovery after that in our ten-year forecast. For our investments, we uh assumed a local agency investment fund return of point three percent. Uh, with our, the remaining investments at one point three percent. For expenditure assumptions, our salaries and benefits are currently at eight point eight million or thirty three point six percent of the total. It is a nine percent increase over this current year. However, that does include. Uh, several factors such as new positions, um, cost of living adjustments that are an estimate at this time. Uh, due to the labor negotiations underway. Uh, step increases for eligible staff as well as the estimated. Results of a uh compensation study that is currently underway. So those numbers may change some. Uh, but that is where our assumption is at this point. Uh, for police services, uh, the next item tonight does go into a amendment. We assumed that that. Is in here at this po- point in time uh and will be amended based on however council decides. Um, so it is currently at seven point seven million, which is twenty nine point three percent of the total general fund expenditures. I would comment that in pretty much any jurisdiction, thirty to thirty three percent is fairly standard for police services. Uh, debt service uh is at one hundred and thirty four thousand. It's a one point two percent decrease. We are paying the gymnasium off in full this fiscal year, but we do have the N G uh debt. So that uh difference is is fairly minimum.
Sorry, what what's N G?
Uh, sorry, that was the the energy efficiency project we did with the solar and and the charging stations and.
Very good. Thank you. Just want to make sure folks know what that is.
Certainly, certainly. Uh, our internal service fund support is increasing uh eighteen percent to one point nine million. The reason for that increase is because of a change in the methodology of determining what goes into uh the internal service funds. Historically, if only one or two departments benefited from uh a a purchase or a cost that would normally fall. In the jurisdiction of an internal service fund, it was budgeted by those individual departments. However, we've determined that to reduce um spikes year to year for different departments. That even those items should be budgeted within the internal service funds. Um, so that the cost is shared between uh departments citywide. The total increase uh that we currently have budgeted is six point five percent to a total of twenty six point one million. So the position requests for the general fund include the public works. Uh, it says engineering technician, but this was the um, the position that was approved in the last meeting. Uh, for uh, to be funded with the S B thirteen eighty three. Um, parks and rec, there is a new recreation coordinator as well as um several part-time positions being budgeted. And then the next item on your calendar is for this additional police lieutenant beginning in January twenty twenty three. The internal service fund support uh changes, uh, building and maintenance has reduced by almost two hundred thousand. I would comment that we did uh include um. All uh building improvements uh on into that uh internal service fund. For fleet, we are currently changing the methodology from number of vehicles to uh replacement cost or historical cost of the fleet. Uh, so that two hundred and forty six thousand increase will come down some before the recommended budget. For information technology, there was a three hundred and twenty three thousand dollar increase. Um, I would like to comment also on fleet. There were some larger, like the bucket truck. And some other large ticket items that were in there, so it wasn't just our leased vehicles and city vehicles at this point. So there were. Or I'm sorry, our regular fleet. It it included uh parks, maintenance, bucket trucks and things like that. That accounted for. Uh, about two hundred and seventy five thousand this year. For information technology, again, the change of uh benefiting single departments being moved into the information technology fund. Cause the citywide total to be greater. Uh, a lot that was moved out of the general fund is resulting in this. It's based on number of logins in the city as to how it's distributed between the funds and departments. And then the legal fund is increasing ninety three thousand, uh, partially to offset the uh. Extra spending then was budgeted this fiscal year. Uh, because the internal service funds generally lag a year, uh, our our reimbursements don't change mid-year. Uh, the results of the year are carried forward to the next year and uh corrected at that time. So this is an overview of what I've just been going through, a lot of numbers, but as you can see, our. Projected net income or net loss is just over a million dollars right now. We had uh several. Changes, um, but the overall impact from the last meeting is not that large. We're hoping to improve that position. Somewhat before the recommended budget. However, um, right now we have twenty five point one million. In revenues, twenty six point one million in expenditures or a net loss of one million. Uh, we do uh expect our estimated unassigned fund balance to be approximately two point three million at the end of twenty two, twenty three. Which is actually higher than what we had originally at when we adopted this year's budget, we estimated two point two at year end. So it's actually potentially going up a hundred thousand and to illustrate that. Our uh. Our estimated unassigned fund balance at the end of uh this year was going to be two point two million. Uh, we identified another five hundred thousand in savings this year plus the three hundred thousand. That we had previously identified in extra sales tax revenue. Um, we expect our budget that we're adopting now, based on the ten-year average, to come in better than predicted. Uh, the average is seven hundred fifty thousand. And uh, so together we end up at two point three million. And the reason that is because we had uh one point four million net income. In twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, which caused our unassigned fund balance to jump to three point seven million. Um, and I had mentioned at that time that we would likely use it this year. So it looks like uh we'll still be around that level at the end of twenty fiscal twenty twenty three. So for our general fund reserve, um, our expected uh for twenty one, twenty two is two point seven million. Um. The estimated twenty two, twenty three is two point three million. And that's a change from our adopted twenty one, twenty two of one hundred thousand. The only uh reserve that we need to fund in fiscal twenty three is the contingency reserve and that is. Uh, a committed uh fund balance and it is set to fund at three percent of general fund salaries. Until a twenty five percent um basis of 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 uh expenditures for the year are there. And that is currently at one hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. Uh, we intend to fund the capital projects reserve fully this fiscal year and the economic development reserve is already fully funded. It is uh something to note that increasing reserves is not considered an expenditure. But it does reduce the amount of unassigned fund balance at fiscal year end. Any questions on the general fund uh presentation?
First, uh, before I go there, Mayor, just one quick little addition, actually a little bit of a correction. Um, uh, Lincoln had mentioned the engineering technician um is being funded by the S B thirteen eighty three. Um, what he actually meant was the environmental specialist position we were looking at, um, and that's not part of the general fund. Um, the engineering technician position that's being talked about here is part of the general fund is actually gonna be um kind of offsetting some expenditures with consultants that we use right now. We have on-call consultants that come in, do encroachment permits, review and inspections. Uh, and the the quantity of those now, we've we've come to realize we can actually afford to have an actual staff person going and doing those inspections and that that fee program. So. Um, that position is not funded by thirteen eighty three, just to make that clarification.
Thank you, city manager Holly.
Uh, for council benefit, uh, council member Washington, I sat in on the budget review. Uh, so we do have a heads up on a bit of this. Uh, so just for clarification for uh the community watching, uh, can you turn back a couple pages there where we had a. See, not that one, that one, next one back. Yeah. So we're short a million dollars. That's what that looks like. For the general public, explain how that. What the ramifications are at are at or about that and how we plan to work with that.
Certainly. So I have uh projected a ten-year forecast and uh. With the the potential softening of the economy, uh, I expect it to take a couple of years to really get back into a profitable situation. However, our unassigned fund balance acts as kind of like a savings account that you might have. So you use your checking account to pay for bills throughout the year or throughout a month. And in months that you have extra, you fund that savings account and in months that you fall short, you use your savings account. So we do um have the unassigned fund balance that um I was discussing where we expect it to end at the end of the year. Uh, obviously, you don't want that to go to zero. We do have emergency reserves, which is the uh. The contingency reserve that I was discussing that we will be funding at a hundred and thirty six thousand. Um, it is over um. Two and a half to three months of our general fund expenditures for the year at this time. Um, but that it it allows you to uh. The the unassigned reserves are there to help you make it from month to month uh or year to year, funding them when you can, using them when you need to. Um, so that you can weather the economic cycle. Generally, an economic cycle only lasts maybe ten years. Uh, you're gonna have an up and you're gonna have a down and then you're gonna have a recovery. So we're just in a situation right now where we came through a a. So we're just in a situation right now where we came through a, a big kind of down and up, and we're getting ready to, uh, the, the idea is that the, it's going to soften again.
It's a rainy day fund.
I'm sorry?
One way of putting it, it's rainy day fund.
Yeah, rainy day.
Helps balances out all our expenses, so.
Yeah.
That's always something to watch, how much we have in, uh, reserves.
Exactly.
And, uh, what, what our shortfall looked like it could be without it.
Yep.
Good, thank you. Questions from council? More information?
Okay. Uh, I'm going to stick with the theme of clarifying questions.
Yes.
And then get on my soapbox afterwards.
That's.
All right. So, thank you for the presentation. Um, I don't know which page it is, but on the internal service funds, uh, some of the large increases you talked about, there were offsets that you would budget funds in the ISF and presumably reduce those appropriations in the departments, which is a good idea. Uh, some of the question is, what then is the net increase? Because if ISF went up, you know, three hundred thousand, was there three hundred thousand in reductions in operating budgets or, or what? What is the net overall?
There would have been more than, uh, than the four hundred and sixty-six, um, that we reduced from the operating budgets, or close to that, because there were two net losses that we're also covering, where you have to refund, uh, to get them back to break even in the following year.
Okay, so if I look through the departmental budgets, I'm going to see some reductions in the recommended for next year compared to the current?
Yes, as far as the items that were originally, uh, budgeted in the departments, we moved them in because they benefited only one or two departments, and historically that would go directly to the department budget, whether it be in the general fund or an enterprise fund. And we determined that, uh, moving them into the ISFs would reduce variability over time, uh, while causing the ISF, uh, support charges to increase initially. Um, but yes, it would have reduced the departmental budgets and the general fund at the same time.
So I'll look for those. Uh, then we go to the parks and recs, to the staffing page. The new parks and rec coordinator, or the rec coordinator, uh, I talked to the city manager, so maybe if he could, or someone could clarify what the role of this new position is, uh, relative to what used to be a capital, some kind of a capital parks person?
Uh, yeah, sure. Councilmember Joseph, um, prior to the pandemic, we had an open space coordinator position. Um, and then we had a vacancy during the pandemic, we froze that position. And so the proposal is to bring back a recreation coordinator position. It's most identical in actual compensation, but it's a little bit of a different job description. Uh, and the idea is to bring back this recreation coordinator position, which is a more broad classification. Um, the philosophy there is particularly at more entry-level positions, you want to, uh, avoid having standalone classifications such as a real unique open space coordinator position, because there's nowhere really for that person to go, once they become, um, more experienced and, um, desire to have some career advancement. If they're pigeonholed in one little area, there's no place for them to go. So the idea is to bring, uh, bring that position back, but in a recreation coordinator position, which is much more broad, and we would, uh, modify that classification to include a lot of the, uh, a lot of the activities or duties that the previous open space coordinator did. So the idea is this person, uh, will recruit for a position over someone who's interested in, uh, open space and, and trail issues. That won't be their sole focus, they'll also be focused on, uh, volunteer activities and special events and some other things, some of the broader topics that are in that class, modified classification. Uh, but the idea is to restore that position, like I said, that was frozen during the pandemic.
Okay, good. That, that sounds like a good idea. Then we go to the police lieutenant. That cost is going to be in the police contract, not, and it, and it shouldn't show up then in any of the general fund salary survey, or salary costs, is that correct?
Well, it's not a salary cost, you're correct.
Okay, so.
We listed it as a position. Technically, it's not a city position, but we, um, identified it really as a, it'll be a position identified in the contract, so we, we wanted to highlight it.
It, it is a big-ticket item, that, to be sure. Um, the last thing in trying to calculate the unassigned, uh, fund balance, I think I'm a little confused over the formula, that I get the idea of saying, okay, we think we have some salary say, or some savings from the end of this fiscal year, you know, we'll assume that's five hundred K.
We, we have identified five hundred thousand just in expected savings on salaries, as well as, uh, purchase orders that we don't expect to be expended through the end of the year. Um, and that, that's only those items, so there, it may actually be more than that, but we've identified that it should be at least that.
And that's good. But I guess my question is, we're also including the average variance from the adopted budgets. It sounds almost like you're assuming there's seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this budget, that it's being appropriated, but we don't expect it to happen based on prior years. But it seems as if you can't count that until next year. Other, for example, if, if you count the five hundred grand that you think you're going to save this year, you certainly shouldn't, I, I guess what I'm trying to say is it sounds like you're, the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollar number doesn't seem like something you should include in the, in what we think we're going to have as an unassigned balance, budget, or, or an unassigned balance, and, until it's come there, so.
Right, and in the, uh, budget document, it will show, it won't have that seven fifty. What I'm doing is giving council a, an overview of the picture that historically we have had these savings, and we are looking at having it this year, where we come in better than, uh, budgeted, and that, that average is seven hundred fifty a year. So that while, uh, the budget itself would look more like, uh, one point five-five, one point six million ending fund balance, um, it's more likely that we're going to come in around that two point three marker.
Okay. But if seven fifty is the average, the current year savings is only five hundred, so.
Um, it, it.
There's something about this calculation that doesn't sound right to me.
The five hundred is only taking into consideration the salary savings and the POs that we don't expect to expend. So that's only, uh, contractual services and salaries expenditures. So it's very probable that other lines will also come in under. Uh, again, you can never go above appropriations, but you can come in under, so there will likely be more savings. We just took, these are some large items, this is what we can quantify. We know that's a low end of what we expect at this time. Uh, also, not included in this is the three hundred thousand in extra, um, sales tax revenue that, uh, we brought up in the previous meeting, because it had already been identified to you. So that would have put it at eight fifty at that point. Um, and that was in April.
All right. Uh, then the last one is just a question on the contingency, uh, the general contingency. So we're putting in a hundred and thirty-six thousand a year, because that's three percent to get to the target. How close are we to the target?
We are, actually, this last year, we would have qualified at twenty-five percent, but we have since dropped below it.
Okay, so we're, theoretically, we could say, let's just throw in a few extra bucks if we've got it, and get ourselves to the twenty-five and.
The problem is it's a moving target. So as your general fund expenditures grow, so does your twenty-five percent.
Right.
Um, so it's, it's one of those moving targets.
All right. Well, thank you for your answers.
Certainly.
Any other questions from council this time?
Um, I also did some analysis of the other funds for the government, so for special revenue funds, uh, we have a five point five million E, Economic Development Agency grant for Green Island Road, a one million, uh, Bay Area grant, uh, for Green Island Road, and a one million State Transportation Improvement Program, uh, grant. Uh, the funding for these is primarily, uh, expended for capital improvements or capital projects. There are other items, uh, and there will be some changes in here. Uh, for example, uh, we do expect the second tranche for the community facilities, district bond financing, uh, to go through, and that will, uh, be in the recommended budget as well. So that will increase, uh, special revenue fund revenues. That debt is a fiduciary in nature, and the city has no legal obligation for repayment. For capital projects funds, uh, we have Green Island Road, uh, it's a fourteen million dollar total project, and we expect to expend three and a half million in twenty-two, twenty-three. We also have the American Rescue Plan Act projects that council recently approved. We'll be doing nine million of, of, uh, improvements using four point four million dollars of the ARPA funding in combination with other eligible revenue sources, uh, to complete those projects. We'll also have additional, uh, capital improvement projects, uh, that, uh, will be delineated further in the capital improvement plan that will be coming to council on June twenty-first. Councilmember Joseph made a comment, uh, during our April fifth meeting that he would like some capital project funding analysis. So I put together a small slide here, there will be more information in the June twenty-first meeting, but our depreciation for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one was seven point four million. Our budget for capital projects this year is twenty-two point one million, uh, and averaging fifteen to twenty-five million for the next four years. Uh, the twenty-six, twenty-seven is eighty-eight million. Uh, that does have some carryover for projects to be completed, that will be started but won't be complete by twenty-six, twenty-seven. Um, so again, we'll, we plan to have a year six plus in the capital improvement plan, so this eighty-eight may come down some. But on average, we are funding capital projects at a much greater rate than we are depreciating them. Also, the, um, the budgets and the capital improvement plan numbers that I have pulled do not include the proposed NG project, uh, for wastewater enterprises to do the new, uh, solid waste pond, or the, uh, the high, high tensile waste pond, uh, as it has not been approved. But if that does get approved by council, that could potentially increase the capital projects by another twenty million dollars, approximately.
Just a quick clarification, is the seven point four million all funds?
It is, that's, uh, governmental and business type.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Um, and we will be able to break it down further into those categories for the CIP in June. So this shows the, the, uh, income statement, we are expecting, uh, about a five and a half million, uh, income on here for capital projects. Part of that is, um, preparing for projects that will be coming, um, and monies that were moved over from the special revenue funds. For debt service funds, as I mentioned, we'll be playing, paying the gymnasium in full this fiscal year, and all that remains for governmental debt service is the NG loan for the energy efficiency and, uh, the debt service for our city hall.
Quick clarification, Boys and Girls Club Gymnasium, or are we talking the middle school gymnasium?
Um, the. We're talking about the middle school gymnasium.
Middle school gymnasium.
Yeah, the, the contract that I saw said Boys and Girls Club Gymnasium.
Yeah.
But yeah, the middle school. So the goal of these is to break even over time. We are expecting to bring this, uh, back to a zero, uh, net position through transfers, uh, either this year or next year, so that will be a positive impact of about sixty-four thousand, six hundred dollars in one of the two years. For water enterprises, we, uh, the current rate, rate structure is good for one more year, so there's one more planned adjustment in twenty twenty-three. We do have a rate study in process right now for all three enterprise funds for water, wastewater and recycled water. Um, and we will be bringing those results to council as we receive them. They will also have additional, um, or new C, CIP projects that will be presented in the capital improvement plan. And, uh, one of the main things of note is that we're still doing, uh, drought water purchases in the next fiscal year. So, for example, if you look at the supplies and services, there was a large jump of two and a half million, or two point four million, uh, this fiscal year, and that will remain at, at those levels and increase some, uh, for this next year.
Another, um, when we did the rate study five years back, I guess, we also plugged in, I don't remember the amount, it's a half million is the number that is, pops in my head, but we were actually trying to set monies aside as a, basically as a, a reserve for the next drought. Did we actually, you know, are we, uh, signing that in our fund, in our retained earnings account for the water fund? Or was it just an idea that the rate study brought up and we forgot to do?
It was an idea, we didn't set up a, a dedicated reserve within the water fund, but it was, uh, an explanation of smoothing is kind of how I'll kind of characterize it, because we knew, uh, you know, in that period of time, uh, what, what the rate study was showing was anticipated revenue under the rate increases, anticipated expenditures, and we knew that, um, there would be a smoothing effect. So we, we didn't set aside a dedicated reserve per se, but, um, you know, the fact that we, uh, had that structure in place has been what's been allowed us to make these purchases over the last eighteen to twenty-four months.
Okay, so we're, we're using that drought reserve whether we officially recorded it as such or not?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
For the wastewater enterprises, uh, we have reached the end of the, the scheduled increases and are currently on a consumer price index increase. Um, again, the rate study is in progress. Uh, we do have somewhat of a structural imbalance in the wastewater enterprises funds. Um, however, we are looking at a slight net income at this point in the wastewater funds for the year, um, after, uh, several years of, of net loss. So, um, again, the, the rate study will help to determine the needs and to make sure that we're planning correctly going forward.
Just another further point of clarification, when we did the water rate study, uh, a couple of years ago now, we did not do a similar study on the wastewater rates, it was water only. So we've been under a CPI condition for twelve, fifteen years, if I'm, my math is right.
For the recycled water enterprise, we did establish that in fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Uh, we did all of the asset transfers to that fund, uh, set up, uh, loans payable and receivable between the water enterprises and wastewater enterprises and the recycled water enterprises. Uh, and, uh, we have been accounting for them, uh, since then. There isn't, uh, currently a uniform rate structure, and we're looking to the rate study to help, uh, establish that uniform rate structure. Uh, there's been a ramping up of operations to help offset the impacts of the drought on the water enterprise. Uh, currently, uh, there's annual deficits, and right now there are no personnel assigned to the recycled water enterprise, um, operation. we're looking at a, um, a net loss right now, um, or, uh, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, seven hundred fifty-four So the, the net position was seven seventy-five, and it's going to go down to fifty-nine. I'm sorry, that was a negative, so that should actually go up. I apologize for my math error. So it'd be, uh, one point five approximately. For the internal service funds, the goal is to break even over time, and that is based on the unrestricted net position. Uh, you are, we are allowed to have a net position for planned asset replacements or purchases. that council may approve. We already discussed some of the reasons for the large increases and also the increase to cover expected twenty-one, twenty-two negative net positions. I would mention that fleet has a restricted fund balance for our investment in fixed assets, which is basically our vehicle equity. So that's why the ending net position remains positive. The, the net loss of four twenty-eight, three forty-eight expected this year, we're offsetting with a net income of four twenty-one, nine fifty-four. So that all of the funds un, unrestricted net position will be near break even. Looking towards the future, we still have a lot of development activity in the city and we expect that to continue for the next coming years. We also expect some continued interest rate hikes. The Federal Reserve Bank expects to bring the rate to, the Fed rate to two point five percent in twenty twenty-three. It's already gone up from zero to point two five, all the way up to one percent right now. We also have some continued inflationary pressures. Paul Krugman, who is a Nobel Prize winning economist, said he does expect that to subside in, in the coming months. But we may see it spike again in about a year. So the Fed has said they expect a soft landing. With Paul Krugman's input, there's talk, is it going to be a slowdown? Is it going to be a recession? So based on our economic, our consultants and those types of information, we are expecting a slower economic growth in twenty-two, twenty-three. So we're going with the slowdown with a moderate recovery after that for our ten-year projection that we will be presenting in, in June. Also, we have the continued economic uncertainty with the political events in Europe right now. So there's a lot of moving factors and we're trying to best forecast for the, the environment that we're in. Are there any questions on the other funds?
Question from council. Ready for public comment?
Sorry, we still have key performance indicators.
Oh, we're doing sections. All right.
Yeah.
Should, I'm wondering if we should do numbers and then indicators. That way, if anybody wants to ask questions about the budget.
That might be helpful because it's going to keep track of how far back do you want to go through it?
Questions, indicators?
I just had a question. I'm curious about charging stations. Are we, do we charge for those? I mean, when you go and plug in and?
Here at city hall?
City hall or library?
My understanding is that we don't charge for those right now.
That's correct.
But is that not income we're losing?
It is possible and legal for us to charge for those. At the moment, we don't have a fee schedule set up and we are providing that as a service to our residents. We're sort of viewing it as a, as a loss leader, as kind of a behavior change type incentive for folks to use electric vehicles. I think as they become more standardized and we have more of them, you could start to see that as a, as a potential revenue source. I don't know exactly what the cost to the city is, both at the library and at city hall. You know, what percentage of our, of our PG&E bill that is and, and so forth. But it is possible for us, but at the moment we don't.
I'm just curious because you mentioned it and I didn't see any, I keep harping on this, but I know the city owns property and I don't, I didn't see it in any of this. Is this not the right?
We don't have a specific fund for properties held. It depends on which properties. The debt, for example, for city hall is kept in this four twenty Cabernet Village. The, the, the energy efficiency is in this fund four forty.
We're talking like the properties that the city owns that, like Lilyville and the property over here and?
Right. Capital assets that are governmental in nature, that would be like a general fund benefit or something like that, are not actually handled in, in the, the funds that we report. They are government wide. So they are a conversion that we do at the end of the year to figure out what our net asset or net equity in properties are. It would be in the financial statements.
Okay, so if we wanted to find out, out of curiosity, how much property, the value of all the property that the city owns, how could we find that?
Well, you could send an email in for a public records request. We do show all of our capital assets in the, in the footnotes in the financial statements, but it would not break out the like actual, there is a buildings and infra, and improvements. So that would tell you the total for like the benefit of the government funds and the total of the, the enterprise funds.
Beth, I think the simplest way would just to send me an email. We can talk about it because technically the city owns a lot of properties, all of our roads, for example, all of our parks. We report those as assets and we recognize their value, but they're not part of our budget, which is really a financial plan for next year. So we're not planning on selling any of those currently owned properties. So any money we might get from a sale, for example, we wouldn't recognize as part of a plan. But as Lincoln was pointing out, in our financial statements and in our auditor's report, we identify all those assets. So our roads, our parks, our buildings, Lilyville, Teresa, the property next door, all those things. If there's a couple, if there's some specific ones that you're interested in, shoot me an email and let's, let's talk about them and we'll, sometimes we get the value for insurance purposes, like we know how much we insure them for. It's one metric of what a, what a value is. We can, I imagine it's a short list. Imagine not talking about all the different properties.
If I can clear, are you worried about, or is your question relating to the rent income that we're generating?
No, I'm only concerned, no, I'm thinking this. If I was having hardship in my house or whatever, you know, I would be selling stuff.
Yeah.
Like the yard sale is coming up.
Citywide yard sale.
But no, I was thinking, you know, if we have a deficit and if you own property, why wouldn't you sell the property to help with the deficit? That's my point.
Okay, then that's a different question.
But that's, that's my point.
That's a good point, Beth. Thank you.
Any other questions? Are we ready for public comment or do we have another section?
There is a key performance indicators that council requested to bring back.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, do we want to have a further discussion?
Mr. Mayor. Do we want to have further discussion on the budget items or do we want to take this all at one time? Because I've been reserving my comments just waiting for the clarifying questions. I don't know if we have any discussions on the budget. And I had actually asked our finance director, which is the best way to approach it? Because I feel like this is a little bit different from the actual numbers.
And I would agree. They're two different subjects. They're just first cousins, but they're separate. Yeah, I get the first cousin part of that.
What do you think, Mr. Holly?
Whatever pleases the council. And sometimes they're, they're parallel topics. Sometimes they're totally different. I think if you have some prepared questions already on some of the numbers, it might be simpler to answer those. Also, I think some of the questions you may have about the, the KPIs may actually involve some other staff here if they're, it may not involve, Lincoln, he may not know all the specifics on some of those indicators. So it might be good maybe to get some of the questions on numbers out of the way first and then we'll jump into the KPIs.
Well, if that's the case, I do have some questions.
Certainly. I was just thinking on this key performance indicator, when that one comes up, it may send us back to the budget itself. Who knows? But yes.
Okay, so we're going to go back to the first two budgets here. I don't know if you need to pull up a slide or anything like that, but I have a question generally on the capital reserve project funding of two million and the economic reserve of one million, the targets. And I think we've reached those, correct, from what I understand?
The economic development reserve, we have reached a number of years ago. We are expecting to achieve the two million dollar target this fiscal year for the capital projects reserve.
Okay, so my question is, this may be simplistic or naive. But when do we actually spend that money? What are we reserving it for? Do we get to say today that, hey, I want an economic development plan? That's, we've got a million dollars. We've got these things going on or, or, you know, there's capital projects reserve and, you know, we, we have some parks ready to go. How do we spend that and when do we get to spend it?
Yeah, this is, these sorts of meetings are the perfect time to begin those conversations. I can tell the council, we've scoped a study, for example, for the Watson Lane area. The annexation of that's going to require environmental review. We've obtained a proposal from a consultant to do that work. We were planning to bring that back in June, actually. And we actually thought the economic development reserve would be a good funding source for that because we think over time we can recoup the costs from the landowners out there as they redevelop. But in the immediate timeframe, pre-annexation, the city would front those costs. So we felt like developing the Watson Lane area would provide an economic benefit return for the city. And so we felt like that reserve would be a good use of those funds. So that's something that's been on staff's mind and we're planning to break back June seven. But for both of these reserves, now is as good a time as any to begin thinking about those.
Okay, and then, and, and is the reserve meant to be spent or is it actually reserved to backstop a few things? I'm just, that word reserve is usually, sounds like a savings to me in case of a break glass.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's meant to be set aside so that it's the opposite of paygo, right? So paygo being you save up two nickels to spend ten cents next year and reserve is meant to say, send up, save up a dollar because you want to buy a dollar's worth of stuff five years from now. So, you know, it's not a year-to-year thing. It's meant to be, it's meant to be saved. The cap, the capital reserve does have some qualifications around it in our, in our council policies. It's supposed to be spent on a project that's in the CIP, supposed to be meant to be a large project. It's not meant to be a, a smaller project. So it has some real generalities, although three council members can change that policy anytime that you feel like. The economic development reserve has a lot less strings, if you want to think of it that way. You know, it's really only geared towards the name itself and, and, you know, can be spent anytime that the three council members think.
So if we spend five hundred thousand of that one million dollars of economic reserve, what is our funding obligation in the next fiscal year?
The first year, you don't have a repayment, but the next year af, after it's spent, at the end of that following year, it would be a hundred thousand a year until it's fully funded, unless council determines a different funding schedule for it.
Okay, great. So that's good to know. I'm going to throw this idea out there right now on the, on the capital projects reserve. A few months back, we had a developer forum out here on what they needed. And we talked about creating some sort of C, CFD down Broadway to begin to allow us to raise some funds or bond some funds around improving the highway, putting in sidewalks, underground utilities and getting paid back over time as development occurs on the highway. I think we all agreed that was a very good idea and I know that was kind of put on the back burner. But that seems like a capital projects reserve use that we could use to kickstart that project now and start to really improve that highway. Just an idea. Don't it out there. Come back to us. Maybe ask the council the rest of it there. So I want to move on to the water enterprise fund. And I'm heartened to know that you said we have some rate studies going on in progress. I actually thought the Blue Ribbon Water Committee addressed this before and I recall now that you mentioned it, Mr., the council member Joseph, that in a drought, we would have gaps. And I didn't think of that until just recently because there's less usage and we're going to have funds. But I, I'm still uncomfortable with this imbalance. And I know that the Blue Ribbon Committee spent a lot of time trying to get those rates right. And I'm, I'm a little, little disappointed that we're not there yet. And I think we're there. Can you help, can you describe a little bit more how this is being studied? When it will be done and how do we go back to rate payers in the near future to make this even?
The, the consultant that we chose is NBS and they have successfully brought forth a new rate structure that is fairly new to the state of California that has automatic adjustments for drought conditions. So you can set it into stage one, two, three droughts or you could say if precipitation falls or, you know, reservoirs drop to a certain level, then you can have some automatic adjustment inflators that when the rain returns, go away automatically. So it doesn't have to go to council every time to try and work something out. That's one way to get around a higher rate all the time because you're always planning for that next drought period. That may be one option that they bring forward. I know that we have been working to get all the information to them that they needed. And they just followed up late last week saying that they had a few final questions on the, the inputs. So once we get those to them, they should be bringing back something that we can bring forward. And then at that point, it would have to go through a Prop two eighteen process to determine that it passed within the residence of the city.
Yeah.
It's kind of a negative ballot. So it has to be more than fifty percent voting against rather than more than fifty percent voting for.
Right. I, I just, I'm, I'm, I'd just like to see that.
Sure.
A closer balance in there.
The clarification I'll make, it's the wastewater fund that we're observing the structural imbalance in and that's the fund that hasn't had a rate study in twelve to fifteen years. The water fund, we're not observing a structural imbalance. What we're observing is the drought hitting harder than we were anticipating. And so we've had to make some extraordinary actions really in response to the drought. And that's why when we talk about these water conservation messages, there's a financial component to it. Every drop that we conserve and can save is, is water that we're not having to purchase. So it's, it's a little bit of a different situation in the, in the water fund. We're not seeing what we would characterize as a structural imbalance. We've just been hit with drought conditions that we anticipated in the rate study, but probably not to this level. Whereas the wastewater fund, yeah, we're definitely seeing a more structural imbalance, both of which we anticipate to be adjusted with the rate study that's looking all three funds.
Yeah, and then the recycled water one is also kind of, we, we is an awesome program and service, but I think the, the citizens need to know that it's putting us into about a seven hundred thousand dollar a year hole is what the staff report says. Don't look, I don't want to look at that chart. It looks scary.
Right. Last year was not that bad. The initial year established the large net loss and that was because of the asset transfers and the, basically the interest that was owed from the history of those assets to date as you transfer them. So that was the large piece there.
Okay, and then I have just one last question and I think Councilmember Joseph hit on this, but I still don't understand it. It's the internal service funds, ISF. In the staff report, it says approximately four twenty of this is to resolve negative net positions in some ISS funds. The large increase is also due to change of what items are considered to be ISF eligible. And then you gave an example of an item that would fit this, but for the benefit of only one to two departments. Those would be, departments would be outside of the ISF. So that you're including them to remove here. So give me a concrete example of what that.
Sure. So the Parks and Rec Department bought a bucket truck or they're planning to. It's two hundred thousand dollars. So you put that into the ISF fleet fund and then you break it up based on the, the historical cost of all of the fleet. And then that percentage goes to the various departments and funds. So because the, the fleet is going to be more expensive for, say, water and wastewater based on their fleet that they need or Parks and Rec is another pretty more expensive, you know, public works, trucks can be more. But the general vehicles you see at city hall, they cost a lot less. So that way we can share those costs across the city. And then it helps to remove fluctuations because all of those one-time or very infrequent purchases don't spike, say, the general fund or another fund in one year. It's kind of averaged over time so that you plan them so that. It's kind of averaged over time so that you plan them so that there's, it's, it's a steadier flow that you're charging out to the various departments.
Yeah, it's an accounting strategy tool, trick?
It's, it's not really a trick, it's appropriate, it's appropriate.
An appropriation.
Yeah, it just, uh, they were always qualifying internal service fund expenditures. Uh, we just never did it that way previously when it only benefited one or two departments. We used it mainly for, uh, things that would benefit everybody, like the, the Enterprise Resource Planning System for information technology. And then we would build that out based on the number of logins.
It also has the, the benefit of thinking these as of, of shared assets. So, you know, primarily, maintenance and utilities might use this, this bucket truck. But, uh, for example, the Public Works, the Streets Division, might use them for another purpose. Uh, and Park and Rec might use them if we're hanging banners, right? You, you could see where this vehicle becomes a, a city vehicle rather than, you know, my department this, my department that. It has that, has the added benefit, um, of having all these be viewed as, as a shared resource. And whoever's maintaining these vehicles, for example, it didn't matter what department they're in, they're maintaining them. So it has, besides being a smoothing strategy in the budget, it has the, the benefit of being a more holistic approach to these, to these assets.
Okay, and then one last question, and I'll hand it over to the rest of the council. Put the charts away, put the PowerPoint away. Explain to us, the public, how we're $1 million in the hole this year?
I would say that, you know, we fared better than expected at the beginning of the pandemic. We also had one-time revenue sources through the CARES Act funding. We had furlough savings through sal- uh, salaries expenditures through furlough, uh, days. And as we're coming out of this, we're, we're planning to resume all services to pre-pandemic levels in this coming year. And we just were at a lower point in revenues coming out of the pandemic than maybe we would have been if we hadn't experienced it. So it really is, um, something where as we come through this, we, we, we have a lot of large projects going on this year as well with the ARPA funding and, uh, putting money into that. Um, and, you know, we may have to, in my 10-year forecast, I've projected that we're going to need to cut discretionary expenditures by like 5% over the next two years. So, but by doing that, we'll be back in a positive net income situation, uh, unless the wheels come off.
Yeah, and there's a little bit of an additional answer I can provide, Councilmember Oro. Um, this, we should have started this with this presentation. Like, these numbers are a snapshot of about, as of about last Tuesday. And, um, the way that these budgets work is they go from July 1st to the end of, end of June. Um, if a revenue comes in or an expenditure comes in on June 30th, it counts in the current year. And if it comes in on July 1st, it counts in the next one. And so there is a lot of fluidity around these, around these numbers. The auditor's reports are the snapshot of what actually happens. What these are are a snapshot of a plan, and this plan's going to continue to evolve until we get to the adoption in, in June 21st. Um, we've, we're continuing to sharpen our pencil, and we're continuing to evaluate the real expenditures versus the planned one, what's, what's really going to happen in the next 45 days, um, what's going to really happen in the next 12 months after that. Um, and so we're, we're always continuing to sharpen our pencils, so, um, and, and I think Lincoln's point is, is right. We are looking to return back to our pre-pandemic expenditures, and revenues are still going to be lagging that a little bit. One of the really interesting things we're starting to discover as we sharpen our pencils, and this will have more of an impact prospectively with our larger-than-normal capital program, is, for example, when, when staff or consultants are working to design a capital project, like all of the work on the Green Island Road project, for example, you can imagine how long that project's been in design. All of those costs are accounted for in the general fund now. It's not until the product becomes a capitalized asset, after it's built, do you actually reimburse those costs, uh, from whatever project funds you're bringing in. So you have this sort of a, uh, kind of accounting, kind of cash flow, sort of a thing that you end up with, uh, for example, in the engineering team, you may see costs that we know eventually are going to be grant-funded, but that may be two or three fiscal years before that reconciliation happens. And we know that will be of a larger effect now because we have a, a capital program that's more robust and, and keeps getting bigger. It's, it's the project that we're doing. So it's those sorts of, those sorts of things, which is why Lincoln was spending a good amount of time talking about our general fund fund balance. And he, you know, was comparing to what we thought when we began this fiscal year versus what we think prospectively. And we actually think we'll see a slight net increase. And that's one of the forecasting tools we use, is we know about those uncertainties about whether something shows up on June 30th or July 1st. You know, how that may manifest itself in one fiscal year or another. But by the time you get to the end of that next one, how did you compare it with the fund balance of the prior one?
Any more questions?
All right, Councilmember Joseph.
Okay, well, actually, Councilmember Oro got me thinking more, so now I have new questions. Going back to the water rate study, um, I agree we need to reassess it, particularly for wastewater and recycled. But I'm concerned that we aren't using the public input or, or the Citizens Committee, if you will, like we did the last time. And one of the advantages of that was they were kind of the advocate saying, yeah, we grilled everybody and this is what you got to do. Absent that validation, if you will, we're going to have a consultant come in and say, yeah, you need to raise your rates substantially. Uh, trust me, I'm a smart guy. It may not go over as well, particularly in our, uh, you know, current state of inflation. So strategically, we may have, uh, handled this process differently. Or at least, we're going to have to include a, a fair amount of time of public input and discussion. And, and in regards to the water rate, if I'm hearing what staff's saying is that the water fund, which absorbs some double-digit increases in that study, is still relatively solvent. It just isn't built to handle a mega drought, which I understand. And so maybe the, the strategy on the water rate study is to create some kind of a drought rate that's triggered either if the governor declares a stage two or, or other triggers so that it isn't a rate increase per se, it's just a rate increase when it's a drought and people get it. The most important thing to remember is when the drought's over, the rate drops. Um, historically in American Canyon, uh, rates just go one way. They, they, they don't quite drop back, so that's just my commentary.
That, that automatic adjustment was one of the reasons why we chose NBS as to, at least look at that alternative for us.
Good. The other, just a side note on the rate study, it would be nice if somebody compared what the five-year projections were to the actuals so that we can identify where we were right, wrong, or missed it by a mile. So that might be instructive going forward. So that's, that's water and utilities. Jumping to capital now.
Um, can I?
Oh, go ahead.
Just real quick, on the, uh, rate study, we still have not received even the draft results yet. So if council's, uh, preference is to have the Citizen Committee, it's definitely not too late to initiate that process?
It might be prudent, but that's just my idea. Or just, it's not even my idea, it's just, it worked last time, so.
If I may underscore your comment there, Councilmember Joseph, yes, it did work.
Yeah.
Extremely well. Uh, I think we had planned for eight people, I think we had over 20 apply. We appointed all.
Right.
And had a great opportunity for the committee to weigh in. Uh, I was surprised at the outcome because other people here were very, uh, oppositional to any rate increase, and they finally understood it. Well, we got to pay for what we, we use. This is the fixed costs that we have to carry, whether we have the water or not. Uh, and I think that would be beneficial to structure something like that again with this consultant. I like the idea of, uh, the rate varies with the matter of, uh, with the available water supply. And does that paying for our fixed costs, so, yeah.
Yeah, the council brings up a really good point, um, and to, to reinforce what Lincoln said. We're probably in the bottom of the second, top of the third inning on that, on that process. We're, we're pretty similar to the process we were in last time when we decided to avail ourselves of a committee. And, and last time, the major issue was all of our rates were highly variable. We had a very low fixed amount, although all of our costs were fixed. We had a very variable amount, and that was creating the structural imbalance historically in the water fund. And so that entire paradigm shift is what we had presented to the council, and the idea was that we should go get some public input on this. So, uh, in this case, we're looking at all three funds, and once we get back some of that reported information, we're going to have a better sense of what we're talking about from a, from a change. And, yeah, we do think the, the committee last time was very positive.
I think the, uh, to your comment, Councilmember Joseph, I think the, uh, the value in that is having the community on board.
Exactly.
Because we didn't really have any problem with that after, uh, they completed their work, came forward, says, yes, this is what we should do. So I think, uh, community engagement is vital to having smooth outcome.
Okay, uh, jumping now to the capital projects and, and capital items. It, it might be handy if we, if the council got a list of all the big-ticket items, not necessarily capital projects, although that would be good, but more cap- in my day, we called them minor capital items. Equipment, trucks, vehicles, $200,000 bucket trucks, that kind of thing. So that if we knew this is what's in the budget, admittedly, it raises the risk of somebody saying, what do you need a $200,000 bucket truck for? But it's worthwhile because when you show up on consent to buy that 200,000, you don't have it pulled and have somebody say what's going on. And since I brought that up, when we talked about it a few months ago, the question I asked was, did anybody do the analysis of, you know, do we use that truck so much that the rental cost of it exceeds the value of the truck? Meaning, how many times can you rent a bucket truck before you get to 200 grand? And if, if it's nice to have, that's one thing, and I get the value of that bucket truck. But if it's cheaper to rent it when you need it, arguably, that's what we ought to be doing. And before we assume, or just say it's easier to do, or when it, before we plug it into the budget, there ought to be some discussion or some kind of justification because we're now, you know, these things may all add up. That's 200 grand that's coming out of your budget somehow. And if you're a million bucks in the hole, that becomes a good chunk. So as compelling as it might be, we may be forced to say it's on hold until the circumstances get better. But if we don't identify it, if it, if it, you know, shows up in the course of a discussion, it just makes me start thinking, okay, what else is in there that's a big-ticket item? That if we could look at closely, we might be able to solve your million-dollar gap without saying, trust me, it'll get better next year. Because public, you know, personal disclosure, I remember being a finance director one year saying, don't worry, we always run surpluses, we'll be fine, and it didn't happen. So just because it normally works doesn't mean it'll work again. And having been burned once, I'd like to avoid doing it to the city. Those are, I guess we've moved beyond the clarification, now we're on soapboxes.
Yeah, if I may, Felix Hernandez, Maintenance Utilities Director, thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, just, Mike, I got to help Lincoln out here. The, the bucket truck keeps coming up, but I just wanted to, to point out that, uh, Councilmember Joseph is that, we, we did make note of that when we brought it to council. Um, it, it was postponed, and, and we are doing that analysis. So it's, it's, um, in this current fiscal year budget because it was put in, but we just don't take it out. The money, the money stays there, we're still doing the analysis. And it's, it's not something that, you know, frankly, that we're really looking at purchasing at this point. So, um, it has been brought up, and if, and I will say that if it got carried over into the next fiscal year budget, um, that was inadvertent.
Well, if it's 200 grand, is that, how does, somehow if that isn't being pursued, somehow it ought to be pulled out of the budget, and the question then is, does that help the general fund's bottom line?
The short answer is yes, it would help the general fund. And I think what, um, Director Hernandez is kind of pointing out is, it was, it's in the current year, and as we brought it to council, council said, hey, we should do some of that analysis. So we've, we've carried that over in, in a planning tool like the budget. But any kind of, um, purchase for this large item would still have to come back to council. We would still need council authority, uh, to actually purchase that equipment, and we wouldn't request that council authority. And so we've done that analysis. So, um, this is part of the, the sharpening that, that we are going to be doing between now and, and June. Um, and, I mean, to your, to your point, um, if we did pull, uh, reduce the appropriations in that fleet ISF by that amount, and it has reverberation, uh, across the funds, their ISF contributions, uh, in each of the departments would go down, uh, by a certain amount. So, um, it's one tool to, to kind of reduce those, uh, expenditures, and that's kind of the sharpening that we do between now and June.
Also, I would note that that will capitalize on the financial statements and become a long-term asset that you depreciate over time. Uh, so you would really, even though you're paying for it this year, there is a multi-year benefit out of that. And so in the analysis, you wouldn't want to say, is the rental going to be 200,000 this year? It's more like, in the next seven to 10 years, will we have 200,000 in bucket truck rentals?
Okay. Is that the comment from council?
I may be done. Uh, I think, I think the concern is that we have that million-dollar gap. And, you know, I think as long as staff is, is still working on whittling that down, that's a good thing. Um, from my perspective, uh, not necessarily Beth's comment about selling assets, but the Lilyville property, uh, which was purchased with affordable housing money, either can be used for affordable housing or, you know, somebody's got to, you know, basically, it's got to be used for affordable housing. I would certainly appreciate the idea of, of doing something with that property. Um, I remember buying it when Rich Ramirez was the city manager, and that's three managers ago. So, um, so far, it's just there. And we really ought to either give it to an affordable housing company to do something with, because that's what the funds were used for, or, you know, somebody buy, you know, or the general fund buy it back and sell it or do something. That's a parcel that, um, is eventually becoming an ISO or more so than an asset. So, I don't know if that was Beth's intent, but. All right, but I think that's it for me for now.
Okay. Look, like way with some comments, also, uh, in the past, we'd also looked at, uh, what it might look like. There are opportunities to share equipment between jurisdictions. It's, you know, it's a way of, both of us absorbing the costs. I'd like to hear some thoughts on that. I think the, uh, I don't know that we ever came to a conclusion about it. These, uh, district has seen as their unique needs, and how do we get the equipment to and from? But there could be a component on a price tag of the, of a vehicle and, uh, how it might be shared. And is that, it's worth exploring, I think.
Yeah, I think that something like a joint powers agreement or something like that would allow that to occur.
So, conversation to be had. Where do we start with that?
Uh, it probably starts with some of those major assets, right? I mean, and I think the bucket truck is probably one of those good examples. And any kind of analysis we would look at before proceeding with that authority and actually making that purchase like that would have to include that, right? If, if we're only going to need four or five rentals a year, and, and there might be someone else we could rent that from or share, you know, share a vehicle with, whether it be City Napa or City of Vallejo. Uh, it's part of our, just kind of a routine practice to evaluate those, those options. And it would, it would have to be with, you know, some of the larger vehicles that are more infrequently used.
Was, uh, impressed with the presentation we had a while back on leasing, uh, like, uh, trucks, vehicles. Uh, as a way of saving, saving money on it over time. Has that been addressed in this, uh, presentation?
Oh, in this one? Yeah, the, the actual, uh, lease cost came in as expected. But with the one-time purchases and the, uh, the planned maintenance that we're still doing for our fleet that we've, we, the residual fleet, you know, it, it overall is higher, but the leasing costs are in line with our original estimates.
So are we moving forward with the plan to, to lease?
Yeah, we, we did, uh, council approved that during this past fiscal year.
Yes.
We have received, uh, four vehicles to date, um, and begun the lease payments on three of them. The fourth one starts next month.
Be interested in hearing how that works out over time.
Certainly.
Because I think we had some that, uh, well, frankly, I think were, how would they be classified? Probably as, uh, vintage vehicles?
Definitely, we have seen, as we talk about global conditions, we've even seen in our fleet program some effect on vehicle supply and, um, availability of vehicles. So, uh, even though we're consortium, uh, leasing, we're not, haven't, those groups haven't been immune to some of the pressures everyone else has seen.
Well, I'm certainly partial to vintage vehicles since I drive one and it still runs good.
We're not going to try and lease here.
But I think for city service, that would be stretching it a bit, yeah. Okay, any other questions on this? Well, this is more of a, uh, just an informational part, item.
Yes, Mayor, this was the informational item. We also had the presentation on performance indicators, uh, it was kind of the second part of this, uh, if the council wanted to talk about those.
Well, yes, let's continue with that.
All right, uh, so the key performance indicators refer to quantified. So the key performance indicators refer to quantifiable measures that help to gauge overall long-term performance of an organization, or in our case, a government. And they specifically help determine strategic financial and operational achievements. So we built them around the strategic objectives that council established on January 29th, 2021, in the strategic plan workshop. There are seven objectives, and so we built out key performance indicators. This is very hard to see.
You should have a handout there at the dais, that's a sideways handout.
Yes, and I did include this so that the city clerk can include the PDF with the, the presentation afterward to make it more legible. But there are several measures that we've, we had been tracking previously under performance measures, and as we adjusted in 2021 to go to the key performance indicators, we, we were able to calculate some backwards in time, and others just began at current and going forward. So some of the prior years have blanks or not applicables because that information was not available. So, you know, our public safety, key performance indicators primarily deal with fire. The community and sense of place have to do with volunteers and events, and then economic development and vitality. There's permits and things mostly with community development, as well as some business license and new businesses that finance provides. Outdoors and recreation are primarily our Parks and Recreation Department. They have to do also with maintenance and utilities when it comes to the trail system and the maintenance of trails. For transportation, we have the pavement condition index, which gauges the status of the roads in any jurisdiction.
What's the threshold number on that?
I believe above 60 is good. Fair.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I think below 60 is bad, above 60 is not so good. It's, isn't it 70 or 75 is what you're-
That was about 70.
Really trying to get to?
Well, just hate to interrupt you, but the value of that is, the worse the condition is, the more costly it is to repair. Yeah, so we need to have a, something that supports that impact, yeah.
Correct, yeah. Maintenance on, on a well-maintained road is going to be a lot cheaper than a replacement. It has to do with street miles and, and new linear feet done in any given year. And then infrastructure has a lot to do with metrics from water usage and, and things that, that finance primarily puts together, and then data from maintenance and utilities on the consumer confidence report, and gallons treated and whatnot at the wastewater treatment plant. And then we also have quality services and organizational effectiveness. And these are a lot of other metrics that lead to proficient operations and to help deliver exemplary services to the community. And these fall in, in many departments and, and cover two slides. So since these are all very small and very hard to read for people here, does council have any questions or comments? Again, these will be in the package with the presentation.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, well, first of all, I appreciate the staff's effort in assembling all of this, and I think it's an important thing to include in the annual budget, and it's an important thing for us to look at in terms of just analyzing how well we provide services and how efficiently, and to see what the trends suggest to us. But having said that, a few observations. Number one, I, I appreciate sorting it by our, our goals, but frankly, those goals started back in 2013, and I personally think our, our goals need to be revisited, because every 10 years you ought to. But more specifically, I think they ought to be sorted by department, primarily because A, if they're going to be part of the budget, the budget is usually sorted by department, and B, if we're looking at this as a means of, of assuring accountability, it makes more sense to say, these are the, you know, finance department's indicators, so that when we're evaluating how well finance is running, we look at those indicators and say, hey, good news, or whatever.
That is how we have historically reported them in the budget?
Right, which, so I guess what I'm saying is, I would suggest that we continue presenting them by department rather than by, by goal. So, but that, that's nothing compared to the other concerns. We ought to include some police department indicators. I think the chief, actually, you could just do an abridged version of his annual report with Part One offenses and clearance rates and traffic numbers and so on, because I think that's a, a key component of quality of life. More to the point, what I'd like to see is we take some of this data and convert them to ratios. For example, with streets, we have the number of street miles, and I thought they were more like 40 miles versus four, but whatever that is, if you take the number of lane miles divided by your street budget, then you can say, okay, here's what it costs to maintain a mile of road. That is useful for a number of reasons. One, it's useful in terms of comparing, are we doing it better or worse? It's good for saying, if we're going to add, you know, 10 miles of road in this project, we know it costs so much a mile, so now we can start projecting our cost estimates. It's also good for comparison to other communities. If we're spending a lot of money per mile and Napa's doing it less, you know, what are they doing differently? And it may be because they're bigger, whatever, but it gives us information that's comparable to other jurisdictions, allows us to start doing the kind of analysis you need to do to figure out if we're doing a good job, and if we aren't, how do we get better? And if we are, frankly, how do you toot your own horn? So what I'd like to suggest is that maybe we have a very, an ad hoc committee, because I'm pretty sure that no one will want to hear me go through each of these lines and make my suggestions. So I'd like to suggest an opportunity to, to kind of spend an hour or so going through all of this offline for the sake of the public, and then come back with a finished product that is along those lines, that it is sorted by department, that it is indicators that are relevant, meaning they relate to the service that we're trying to provide, that they are easy to collect, or if not easy, at least you know that's what you got to do and you design it accordingly. And most importantly, they're comparable to other jurisdictions, so that we can start comparing how well we do. And we can get it done and back to a final draft for the council's review as part of that budget approval, if, if anybody likes that idea. And I don't want to suggest who I'd like to ask as, as my other council member.
Look, I'll share a thought with you. This was on a Excel spreadsheet, you could have a number of ways of sorting it, as you say. You can do something that presents like this, and you have whatever parameters you want, and now you have it by department. So it could be a way, you could analyze it from a number of different perspectives.
Yes.
Frankly, I, I appreciate your point, Councilmember Joseph, but I'd also like to see how these things come together under a related topic, as it's presented here. And yeah, we could add, certainly, there's areas where I would like to know as well. Police Department, for example, does a very good report. Okay, Councilmember Oral?
Thank you for the work on doing this. This sounds like a job for opengov.com, like, put this on some visual tool, because I keep looking at this and like, my eyes are hurting. I know there's a lot in here, but I think this is something that we can visualize better than we can on a spreadsheet. In terms of categories, I, I, I'm okay with the goals. I'm gonna have to disagree with Councilmember Mark Joseph. I'm okay with the way the goals and mission statements are now. I keep looking at them every now and then, and I'm like, perfectly fine. I don't want to go through the process of putting that together, because I felt like I was, I was a private citizen at the time those things were coming together, and I thought it was nice to rally us, but in the end, you know, I think those things still stand, and I don't think we need to spend much time doing that. We should probably get our general plan updated first before we go on another public input process. But in terms of presenting this, I mean, there, there's a lot of data here. You know, I don't know if we need so many. I'm try, I'm always down to try to pare these things down, but if we could do this in a visual way, it would be great.
Also aware that the-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
And I know opengov has that, because I think the City of Slow has done that, San Luis Obispo, because I went to the League of California Cities, and they showed me what they were measuring and how they were presenting that using that tool. May want to look into that.
Councilmember Washington?
Yeah, I actually like this. I'm, I'm data-driven, but I would agree with Councilmember Joseph, breaking them by, breaking them down by departments, you know, the functional groups, the kind of, to Councilmember Oral's part, makes it look a little bit more easier to the eye when you sit there and you know what, you're, you're dealing with departments, you know, and at the very end, you could probably, you know, do a high-level synopsis of how it all comes in together. But it also gives credit to each department head to represent their department. And it's not saying that we need to have some type of competition of any sort, but it does lend to that. You know, for instance, I run a security and safety division, and when you compare me to engineering, I want to make sure that my team is doing a lot better, or my finances are looking a lot better. But it makes it a healthy competitive type of situation. So again, I appreciate, this is the first time I even actually had something that kind of broke down and gave me the years to look at since I've been on council, so I appreciate this. And I already know that Councilman Joseph is thinking of volunteering me to work with him on this program, and I will gladly accept if he asks me to.
That's it, thank you. I was just thinking of, also, of note, right in the middle of this is COVID, so it's had an impact on performance and, and finances as well. Okay. Anything further?
No, that's, that's all we needed, Mayor, but if, it does sound like we have something that feels like a soft motion on the table-
Yeah.
-as far as next steps before bringing it back in June.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I don't, do you-
You need a motion?
I don't know if we need a motion, but-
This was a report.
Maybe you recap a couple of things, well, put it this way, I'm gonna put in what I thought I heard or said. Actually, I said it, I didn't hear anything. The, the rate study, I don't know if the, the rate study commission in the water thing, as we bring that with water, I think that would be a good idea, I'm supportive of that. And then I threw out the idea of the capital, what is it called?
Capital Reserve Fund-
Capital Reserve Fund-
On the 29th corridor.
Trying to kickstart the 29th corridor, and I don't know if you need direction from council or that, or you feel comfortable with it, but I am supportive of it.
Yeah, on that particular, we're not going to be in a place, so when you use a reserve, it just means you're using it, it doesn't change your fund balances, whatever, it's going from kind of one pocket to another pocket. We're not going to be in a place before June 21 to know how much of that capital reserve might be ready, ready for something like you're talking about, but I think within the next fiscal year, we can come up with something. I'm not talking in the next fiscal year, I'm talking later this summer. So June 21, I, I wouldn't expect we would have an item that says we're going to use that reserve, but what I can say is, we're going to go, get to work on figuring out what might be a good use of that, because there's, 2 million is a, is a large number, it's also a very small number compared to the, the amount of things that could get done on the highway, and we're going to want to sit and think about how that's used. Is it used as construction money, or is it used as design money? Is it used as leverage money, or is it used on a half a block improving one thing? And we probably have to present some options to the council, and we got to think through those options a little bit, because as we kind of talked about even back in January, there's, as you talk about that ARPA money, right? Again, the ARPA money was a special amount of money, but compared to the need was not that substantial, so we kind of had to break that out into pieces a little bit, and so we got to sit and think about what some options we want to bring to the council, and we won't have that done by the, by the 21st of June, but what we can do is make note of that in the budget, that there's an interest in the council in using that reserve, and we would come back to council and say, look, we want to use that reserve now, here's the thing, you tell us this, that, and the other, what you want to do. We would bring that back in the fiscal year with an idea.
No, and I appreciate that, I'm just merely using budget negotiations to move progress forward on the highway. If you can bring that back later this summer, I'd be fine, and I'll lay off for now.
I appreciate your point on that, just having, served on this council when we hit the, the economic recession, and that was a hard hit. We had to lay off staff. We just barely survived that. And some of our neighbors, well, one of our neighbors went bankrupt, you know, so part of the analysis to me, giving potential impacts on what economic conditions are, finances are on a larger picture, need to consider that. If we're comfortable with that number, then I'd love that, okay, yeah. But we, we know that economics in, economy in California is very cyclical. You know, this housing prices to the moon is going to stop sometime, and, you know, they've learned lessons from the last time in terms of the finance institutions, can't just be a stated income to be a run of finance on, you have to have evidence of what you're capable of. So that would be my one cautionary note on that.
Yeah, I think, Mayor, what, what you're saying is, as we would bring back something that might potentially use that reserve, we're going to want to be pretty clear about the intermediate forecast, because that, that reserve has the effect of helping us weather a storm. And so if, if we're going to go ahead and want to use that on, on a capital effort, we want to be pretty clear about the, the medium-term forecast and, and refine that a little bit, so that we're making sure, you know, the council has all of those, you know, possibilities and has eyes wide open.
Good to have all that information as we make our decision. Thank you. Councilmember Joseph?
Yes, I'd like to echo support for the idea of spending some of that money on the corridor and making sure we work in, in cooperation with Caltrans, because even though they may take five or 10 years to do it, they are on, you know, we're, we're moving down that path in which they are going to make some big, big investments, multimillion-dollar investments, putting in sidewalks, curbs, gutter, undergrounding power lines, doing a lot of the, the aesthetic improvements, which will also enhance safety. So we just need to make sure we use that one or $2 million strategically, as you said, you know, to incentivize probably, because a lot of the infrastructure, if we're lucky, you know, Caltrans will pick that tab up, but we've got to start thinking about key projects and locations that we can use to kickstart that corridor transformation. So I agree, I think it's something we ought to look at. I think it's a, a strategic investment that ought to be considered.
That's paying for the buck.
That's paying for the bucks. Also, the rainy day fund at 25% theoretically is, is that pot of money to get us through the ugly times that inevitably happen. The only other thing I want to say is, on behalf of the people who talked about spain neuter and traffic calming, I am certainly sympathetic to that. By the same token, it's kind of hard to add to the kitty when, I'm sorry, add to the, to the, puns are always subliminal, to add to the budget when we're a million in the hole. So, you know, like I said, I am sympathetic to throwing a few bucks in that direction, but, but obviously, it kind of depends on, you know, balancing the budget first.
Yeah, on that particular issue, there's still some questions out there. You know, I don't know what check we could write to Nappy Humane, where they would suddenly take American Canyon residents at the drop of a hat. I don't know if there's a check we would write to the animal shelter, for example, because they don't do that kind of service there. So there seems to be still a lot of misinformation and questions, we're going to try and get sorted out before the 21st, but I don't, I, I don't know that it's as simple as writing a check to Nappy Humane and suddenly you have an express pass to get all the cats.
And it sounded like there was a shortage of veterinarians providing the service, and if you don't have anybody doing the service, it doesn't matter how much money you give them, so.
They just picked up, I believe, as I read in the register, $75,000 grant?
Right, so they, they have money, but that doesn't, that doesn't get you a bet.
Who's asked to, if interested to contact, find out more information about that.
Okay, so I guess we probably don't need a, a motion if, if the council's agreeable to have Mark and Pierre sit down with staff and go through some of these- performance indicators before we come back on June twenty-first. It's kind of a soft motion that I heard and
Thank you. Councilmember Oro, what are your thoughts on that?
Okay with that. And we generally heard some, you know, some comments around adding, uh, PD measures to this. Um, perhaps shortening this, this, this list. We have been looking at Open Gov. Uh, we do think they have a really great visual platform. It's not immediately obvious how we can incorporate some of this. I hope we can. Um, but a, a way of visually making these tools a little cleaner than a, than a spreadsheet. And, um, you know, the, the other thing I'll just add with this, most of these indicators are rear looking indicators. And we, we don't have a lot of forward looking indicators. And so I think that's, um, we may not have changes in, in time for June twenty-first. But, um, as we look at this, this is a lot of data on the past. And it may be a trend for what's going to happen in the future, but it's not necessarily the, the projection of what's going to be happening for the future. And, and, you know, further evolution of this, uh, we'll be looking at data that's going to be more forward, forward looking. Um, but we don't have a lot of that in there at the moment.
If you get, you know, three to five years of history, you'll see a trend and, you know, that's the first step. So you can't, you know, I appreciate the, uh, the opportunity to commit more time to this. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Holly, you got what you need to move forward?
We did. Thank you, Lincoln, um, for the presentation. And thank everyone for, uh, all of your input on this.
Council ready to move on to law, item fifteen, law enforcement service contract amendment?
Thank you, Mayor. As Chief Greenberg approaches, I think he does have a, a short presentation for you. Uh, we discussed this a little bit in the context previously about the budget. But, um, this item relates to an amendment with our, uh, agreement with, uh, Napa County for law enforcement services. And particularly, uh, a position, uh, related, uh, lieutenant position. So, uh, as we look to sort out some of our technical difficulties. You know, we, um, we've had a contract with the Napa Sheriff for twenty-five something years. And, uh, it has proven to be, uh, a, a contract that is still really advantageous for the city. Uh, and the current contract has two more years on it, uh, next fiscal year and the prior fiscal year. Uh, we're talking about amending it though, um, uh, for the purposes of that position. So go ahead, Chief Greenberg. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Chief Greenberg.
I'm going to raise this up a little bit. Good evening again, and members of the community that are here. Like Mr. Holly spoke about, we're here to talk about, uh, possibly amending the current law enforcement contract with the Sheriff's Department specifically for a lieutenant's position. So just a quick overview of the staffing level at American Canyon Police Department right now. We have, uh, myself, one chief, four sergeants, two traffic officers, two SROs, two K nine handlers, uh, community resource officer, and then twelve patrol officers. And then I include the, uh, two police technicians, which are city employees, and the administrative clerk, which is also in the contract. Just because even though they're not sworn officers, they're still, they still fall under the supervision at, uh, American Canyon Police Department under the sergeants there. So one of the keynotes I want to add to the current staffing on this slide is the, this current staffing, as far as supervision goes, has been in place for at least ten years, probably more. Uh, we have not added any, any sergeants to the department in at least ten years since we've been at nine one one Donaldson Way in the Public Safety Building. And we also haven't, uh, added any management positions since retired Sheriff Cofer was chief when he first became chief in American Canyon. And that was quite some years ago. Currently, as you can see, there's a gap between chief and sergeant, and there is no lieutenant. So I did some, some comparisons with, uh, agencies within Napa County. Uh, as you can see, the Sheriff's Department, um, I, I'll go through each one. There's a hundred and ten sworn, and they have five lieutenants. Uh, Napa Police Department, seventy-eight sworn. They have three lieutenants. We have twenty-eight sworn, zero lieutenants. Santa Elena and Calistoga both have one lieutenant each. American Canyon Police Department is the third largest agency in Napa County and the only one without a lieutenant. Proper law enforcement chain of command has been in place for quite some time and has also been proven to be very successful. As, as it, as it, as the city grows, uh, our population is going to grow, obviously. And we're going to be need to look at adding more officers, more sergeants. And, uh, uh, in my opinion, we need to add a lieutenant. Uh, we, we've needed it for quite some time. There's a, the gap in the chain of command. And I'll go to the next slide. Uh, these are some duties that a lieutenant typically does in a law enforcement agency and specifically, uh, to the American Canyon Police Department. One of the ones I want to point out that's, uh, I feel the city would benefit in having a lieutenant is acting chief in my absence. Uh, currently, we don't have that. We have to rely on the Sheriff's Department to provide an administrator when I'm off at training or on, on scheduled days off. And I feel that the physi, the city is losing out on that as far as that administrator is not working day to day with the fire district, with city staff, with elected officials. You don't have that working relationship. You don't have that FaceTime. For instance, just yesterday, I was here, obviously, we had an incident over on, uh, Teresa and, uh, Los Altos and the fire district and, and us work together. Uh, I work daily with the chief and assistant chief over there. If another, if another, uh, administrator came down from the sheriff's office, they wouldn't have that working relationship. And I, I feel that's very important to make an operation go smoothly. We don't question each other. We work together. We, we, we know how each other work. And therefore the operation goes smoothly and then, uh, resolves in a good way. Uh, there's some other, uh, items on here, duties. One specifically would be like tonight. If, if I couldn't make a meeting, the lieutenant would be in my place. Currently, these duties are distributed between the four sergeants and myself. And that tends to take away, it's usually day shift and it can take away from their daily supervision duties of supervising the officers and the calls for service that are going on out on the street. Lastly, we'll get to the, the meat and potatoes, the money portion of the, uh, contract amendment. As you can see, uh, one lieutenant, if this is, uh, if, if we decide to go with this route, would be effective January seventh, twenty twenty-three, mid-year. And is a hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and ninety-one dollars. Into the next year for the full year, as you can see here, it is three twenty-six, four eighty-two. Any questions?
Well, I appreciate your presentation. Thank you. With respect to, uh, chain of command and function. And I think it's the, uh, I've clearly positioned that we need to give consideration to, you know. Certainly, uh, oh, this comment I could have, we'll all appreciate very much. Councilmember Washington, working the, that, uh, career area.
Yeah. Thank you for that, uh, presentation, Chief. I, um, you know, one, I support the, the ideal and I identify the gap right off the bat, you know? Um, I think you and I have had conversations about that in the past. Um, I think what the community needs to realize also is, uh, what does that gap really, really mean? And, um, having that, uh, high level, uh, management piece, uh, is important. Um, also from an internal investigation, uh, aspect. You know, typically a lieutenant, uh, well, typically a sergeant is just the higher ranking person that's on the street. Keeping the, uh, keeping the other officers in line, making sure they stay by the book. That lieutenant position gives that buffer, uh, to assist with the chief. And, um, most cities, I know you could, you, you did a benchmark with all the Napa County cities. Um, it would be interesting for the public to find out what other cities similar that actually don't have their sheriff's department as, you know, using as at the contractor. But cities like Pino, cities like, uh, Hercules, they have lieutenants in the same, in the same role, same capacity. And it's, it's important, um, uh, to have that seniority expertise, uh, in part of your arsenal, you know? So, um, I'm open if anybody ever has questions about, you know, the purpose and the need of it. It's, 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 um, something that we need to look at because our city is growing rapidly. You know, and like you said, in the last 10 years, if you look at where we were 10 years ago, uh, I even say then we needed a lieutenant. But, uh, we, we've grown a lot in the last 10 years and we're expected to grow even more the next, next 10 years. So that's to me forethought on your part by seeing that gap and trying to address it now. So, um, I appreciate it and I'm open if, if people have questions about the importance of that role.
Point out, uh, 10 years ago, we were about half the population we are today. With that, Councilmember Joseph?
Well, I'd like to start commenting about the, the population. Twenty-ten, you're right. We haven't added any staffing for the last 10 years. But in the last 10 years, we went from twenty thousand to twenty-one thousand. So part of the reason the staffing hasn't gone anywhere is just because we haven't grown population wise.
I'm sorry, I meant from two thousand, two thousand and ten.
Two thousand to twenty-ten, we doubled and, and we added a, a number of people. So having said that, the reality is we are poised to grow. Watson Ranch is already going, um, projects all along the twenty-nine corridor. So we, we obviously need to position ourselves to be ahead of that curve. So, a, and I think you've made a compelling case for the lieutenant. The only thing I'm struggling with is, you know, how do you pay for it? You know, and maybe we should have put you ahead of the budget so that we'd all say, boy, that's a great idea. And then find out, oh, how are we going to pay for it? So, you know, that, that's the quandary I'm in. How do we, how do we reconcile the, you know, the legitimate need for this extra staffing with the situation of our budget? And strategic, uh, delay would offer the idea that if this is to be effective January one, that maybe we can, uh, you know, find out where our budget settles up before we commit to this. Is that an option?
Yeah, among the reasons, we actually didn't have this item slated to come until June twenty-first. It was going to be one of our, um, kind of annual contract things. I actually moved it up in the calendar because we're going to have the budget conversation tonight because our law enforcement contract is our single largest expenditure. So, uh, this kind of a change, we wanted to have, it dovetails with the conversation we just, uh, we just had. So, um, you know, I, we did talk about, uh, and worked with the chief to kind of have a, a delayed implementation, uh, for January. But the reality of their recruitment process, um, you know, it needs to, it takes that amount of time. So, um, you know, we, we can certainly, um, bring back our budget on June twenty-one and bring back this item on, on June twenty-one. And, and there's nothing about tonight that couldn't be accomplished on June twenty-first because on June twenty-first, we were planning on bringing it already. We wouldn't want to wait till January, uh, because that doesn't give them time to do a recruitment. So, um, you know, if, if the council wanted to, to push it off to June twenty-one, that, that is possible. Um, we did include this in, in the proposed budget. So all of the conversation that we had earlier and, and the things that are, uh, you know, still moving and, and still reconciling, this was in there as a planned expenditure. So, um, this wouldn't cause, you know, that needle to move. That's already, that's already there.
Good point. Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Oro?
Yeah, we don't need to wait for, for June twenty-first to do this. Uh, this is an investment in the community and into our public safety. Um, and it's needed. It, it's not, this is not, um, uh, a request that seems just something that can help Chief Greenberg out because it's a fun thing to have. It's a necessary thing to have. So I, I don't think we need to wait.
Well, I think as pointed out, uh, from Mr. Holly, uh, those considerations were what we, material we just saw was included in that. So
Correct.
I think, uh, to me, rather than, uh, juggling buggies around, it seems to be we have it currently and I'm satisfied with that. Anything, anything further from council?
It would be appropriate, Mayor, to seek public comment to see if there was any.
Getting ready to do that. But waiting for everybody else. I'm seeing nothing to my left or right. So public comment, please.
I just want to say that I feel this is a, a very necessary position for the chief because everybody else has an assistant. Jason, the fire chief, Lord forbid anything should happen to him, where would we be? You know, and I, I, I encourage you to please, um, uh, approve this position. And I'm very compelled. I will take the position for you, Chief.
Any other public comment? Saying none, do we have anybody on the queue?
We do not.
All right, very good.
Well, if there's no public comment or no further discussion, I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-twenty-two, next in order, resolution of the City Council, the City of American Canyon, approving amendment eighteen to Napa County Agreement Number Three Two Two Zero with the Napa County Sheriff's Office for Law Enforcement Services for the period of Ju, January seventh, twenty twenty-three through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
And I'll second it. Motion second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Thank you, council.
Moving on to our agenda, now we will take up item. Item number sixteen. Projects funded by SB one slash R M R A for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. About the resolution approving the list of projects for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three funded by SB one, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of twenty seventeen.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Director Smithy's has a quick little update for you. Um, this list of projects is just a subset of the overall paving projects we have in our program this year, and, uh, she can tell you a little bit more about it.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, American Canyon community. Um, this evening, um, we're providing the, the annual list that's provided to, um, the state's requirement to be submitted by July one in order to be eligible to receive our funds throughout the year. Measure T is brought to you biannually. So every two years, we're bringing this in large, encompassing five-year, um, street pavement list. And usually traditionally, we, we build from that list and just continue to put forward the same annual projects from that measure T list to the state. However, this year, uh, earlier this year in April, we had the opportunity to, um, add the, uh, American Canyon Road East project with the county, um, partnership. So, um, the flexibility we have with the, the state funding is that we don't have to go to a public hearing to add a project to the list. Um, it can be added in, in rears or add in front. So we, we moved up the American Canyon Rose, um, Road East Fund, um, of three hundred thousand dollars to the council in April. And then we have Benton Way at the top of our list, which will be, um, out to bid once we complete the recycle pipeline project later this summer. So, um, with that, I, I look to council. We only get about, um, between four to five hundred thousand dollars a year in SB one, R M R A funds. So, and they really only want to see the projects you're probably going to be spending that year with that fund. So, uh, there's a lot of flexibility with the R M R A funds.
All right. Well, thank you. I just see the, um, item here, uh, from, uh, paving from the, uh, pavement management. Oh, this brand is so small.
The American Canyon Road East project is from Flosden to the east.
East city limits. County's working on the, uh, are they on the, uh, city limits to, uh, SR, uh, Highway eighty?
Yes, and they were also adding an adult for Vallejo too, so we're trying to get that whole run done to eighty. So, um, we, we have the three-way partnership. Um, we'll see how the bids come in. They open up on Thursday. So, um, it'll be exciting. And if, if it falls through on the county side, we're going to pick it up and repackage it and go out to bid.
Okay. Thank you. And the, uh, Benton Way to, uh, Wetlands, uh, you know, this is the work need to be done there. So, good. Couple that, uh, I would suggest need, uh, consideration is, uh, Teresa from Eucalyptus to, um, Napa Junction Road.
Traffic coming?
Right here by outside the building, here on Teresa.
Yes.
Yeah, it's pretty rough, a lot of traffic. Yeah. Does that somewhere in the works some point?
I have to consult our, our ten-year, probably our ten-year program for measure T.
One of the other things to keep in mind with, uh, that particular segment, uh, related to the Oath Hill project is a sewer upsizing. Uh, much like the Valley View project did a sewer upsizing for their piece of Teresa that's actually in good condition now.
Thank you.
Similarly, we didn't do the whole part of Teresa with Valley View because we knew the Oath Hill project would be coming along. So.
We'll have them do it. Thank you.
Once that's done, yeah, we can do that.
All right. Thank you much. With that, Councilman Joe- With that, Councilmember Joseph.
Yes, on the Benton project, is there any traffic calming aspects plugged into that? Or at least, maybe not necessarily with SB 1 monies, but somehow because it's a combo project?
It's one of those projects that council approved earlier this year for enhanced crossing, but with the complete streets assessment being done by Fair and Peers, they're looking at that quarter in particular and how to restripe and better improve the crossings to the schools and the aquatic center. So ideally, the recycle pipeline goes through, and then when we pave, we can combine all the proposed striping improvements at the same time as the paving project.
And so just to tie it all in, we could go ahead and approve this, and you still have the flexibility to throw, well, I mean, you've got to get the pipes under the ground first and then the road. But theoretically, there could be additional treatments, striping or traffic calming and so on. So there's plenty more to see on Benton Way, is that the answer?
Yes, from Wetlands Edge to Elliott Drive.
Just thinking of the flashing stop signs there on Silver Oak across the apartments.
We'll see what we get from our consultants.
All right, thank you. But I think that does bring attention to people there. And Councilmember Joseph, you're right, the, probably one of the best things would have somebody, a grown-up, a traffic control person there when the kids are getting out of school because it gets to be pretty crazy.
Typically, you don't add a rectangular flashing beacon at a controlled intersection, but you can't add the lighted stop signs that tell a car, hey, slow down, it flashes stop at them. So there are a lot of different control devices out there that are applicable. We'll see what our experts tell us and provide some feedback to them. We should have that complete streets assessment in a month or so from.
All right, I'm up at Pitts, but the speed mats on Wetlands Edge, as you heard earlier this evening, certainly had a rather dramatic effect on slowing people down. I witnessed myself when I ride a bike over that way. Okay, any other comment, council? All right, any public comment on this matter? All right, we'll close public comment, return to council.
If there's no other comments, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2022, Next in Order Resolution of the City Council of the City of American Canyon, Adopting a List of Projects for Fiscal Year 2022/23, Funded by SB 1, the Road Repair and Accountability Act of 2017.
I'll second.
Motion second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Joseph?
Yes.
Councilmember Oro?
Yes.
Councilmember Washington?
Yes.
Mayor Garcia?
Yes. Thank you, council.
Moving now to our management and staff oral reports.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Erica's already up, looks like she's ready to go, she's got a couple of more updates for you. Felix and Brent and Ally also have some updates for you.
All right, I wanted to announce that tomorrow evening will be our traffic calming workshop, beginning at 6:30 via Zoom. The link has been put on or added to our Granicus agenda. And we'll have the police chief, fire chief, and our communications manager assisting with what the city's doing citywide as far as traffic calming and public outreach. Looking forward to that meeting.
Erica, I think you mean Thursday night.
Thursday night, excuse me, I've got the days mixed up.
The Warriors are tomorrow night, the Warriors are tomorrow.
So May 19, 6:30 via Zoom. It will be recorded, so if folks will be able to come back and listen to it later. And then we also, as I said before, American Canyon Road East, the county road project's bid opening will be this Thursday as well. We're also out to bid for our annual pavement restoration project. We're going to be improving on eight street segments. Those bid openings are May 31st. And then we also went out to bid last week, the recycled water expansion project. It's approximately $2.9 million project, but it includes the Tower Road section as well as Spike Rush and Benton Way. Those bids open on June 2nd. We're hoping to bring those two projects that are city projects back to council for war on June 7th, depending on the timing and completeness of the bids. Lastly, we have a local roadway safety plan. We debuted the website last Thursday, and as of today, about noon, we had 600, 500 hits, but only 12 have completed the survey. So I'm asking the community, those who use or work in American Canyon, those who live here, to please go to the website. It's shown on our main virtual webpage. We also have a nice QR code that our city clerk added this afternoon for tonight's meeting that you can scan into your cell phone if you're here and take the traffic survey. And also, there's an interactive map where you feel like you have, you can comment interactively and add your comments and where you have concerns. There's also a collision heat summary showing the hot areas in the city from traffic stats. So this will be open until July 29th. It's part of our public outreach campaign for the local roadway safety plan. There'll be more public outreach efforts this summer with GHDR consultant. So this is just one platform starting now, so thank you.
Thank you, we look forward to that. Certainly, that issue on traffic calming comes up quite a bit.
Yes.
Felix Hernandez, Maintenance Utilities Director. So update, last month, we did have a visit from the San Francisco Regional Water Quality Control Board. They did a thorough inspection, compliance inspection at the water reclamation facility. Some of the things they look at, and it's extensive list, but I'm going to read through these because I think it's important that we, everyone know what, how granular they get. Records and reports, operations and maintenance, monitoring records, monitoring procedures, maintenance inspections, an entire sidewalk around the facility, right down to the appearance of the recycled water. They look at it that closely. So we received the final report this week. It did note that we were in full compliance and showed good practice.
Good. Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you. And something else came up, as council had touched on, the enterprise lease agreement. I would like to note that we've taken delivery of all electric van in the facilities maintenance division. So 100% electric and several electric hybrids, so plug-in electric hybrids. That's moving forward.
All right, very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Wow, we're doing a lot on the whole issue of climate change.
Hi, good evening, Brent Cooper, Community Development Director. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers and members of the public. Couple of updates from the Community Development Department. Just yesterday, we received an application for a new project called The Hotel at the Ruins. This is the highly expected hotel in Watson Ranch. It would be located east of the ruins on the hillside. It includes up to 200 rooms. And in a future phase, they're expecting 18 to 25 private residences, which sounds pretty fun. It's a four-story building designed by an architect in the Santa Barbara area, so it's really nice. This application will be reviewed by the Planning Commission, so we'll be going to the council.
When do we see the, when will the Planning Commission?
Well, it was just submitted yesterday. It's a very complete submittal, and so I would expect it probably will be going to the Planning Commission in probably two months, two to three months.
So we'll get a preview of what it's going to look like?
Yes, we'll be hosting it on our website and you can take a look at it.
Very good.
Can we, excuse me, on the subject of hotels, are two other hotels that have been approved, are they still ready to break ground or?
Home to Suites is very close to being ready to break ground. They bumped into a couple of easement issues that have given them pause, but our Public Works Director has been coming up with solutions to it. So she's been really helpful. Way to go.
Home to Suites seems to have grading going on right now.
Yeah.
An offense there.
They maybe, and maybe that's, yeah, more up to date than I know, but, you know, they've got their blessings and they just had a couple of issues to work out.
In the Best Western?
The Hampton Inn Hotel. The applicant for that is working on a hotel in another state and is a little too busy right now to work on the one here, as I've been told. But we'll be staying in touch because a lot of work went into that application. I think we're all very proud of the outcome.
Yes, yes. Yeah, and Home to Suites, that road we identified, that was in that very old document?
Called Center Street, now called Main Street. I think you may be referring to.
It appears to be gravel now.
Right, there is another road called Weber on an old map, but it will not be used for traffic.
Okay, I was wondering about that, it's one they have the utility lines going down.
Utilities, and I think might make a great little pedestrian access as well.
Would that be a public safety access?
Certainly, mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll be definitely available for that.
I was just wondering what the use of that would be. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. We have another project that has reached a major milestone, the Jivononi Logistics Center. This is about 245 acres on the north side of Green Island Road, on both sides of the brand-new Devlin Road, that we'll all be enjoying the ribbon cutting soon. This project will be built in two phases for up to 2.4 million square feet of they call high cube warehouse. That's the high-tech version of warehousing. And the project is very environmentally sensitive. They'll be protecting 45 acres of wetlands, and they'll be extending the vine trail along Devlin Road and along their frontage of Green Island Road. When the EIR is released for this project on Friday, the public review period will close on July 5th with fireworks.
Thank you.
The Planning Commission will have a workshop on the EIR at its meeting on June 23rd. And because it's an EIR, this project will be coming to the city council per our ordinance for environmental review. And then finally, we've been doing a lot of pop-up and various group meetings on our housing element. William He, our other planner, went to the high school on Friday and spent the day there with Beth Goff's class, their senior class, and talked to them about housing and just constantly inspired by our students, their intelligence and thoughtfulness on housing issues. And I know I had a really great day and we got some good feedback from the students as well. And we're just continuing on with going out to different groups where they are and meeting with them when we can.
So strategy I found works more effective, rather than come where we are, no, we go where they are.
That's right. Well, we have those meetings, too, but we're also reaching out to people and taking valuable time at their meetings, so we appreciate that.
Good strategy. On the Green Island Road warehouse, how many million square feet?
2.45. It's, you know, these things are maxims. You know, you look at Napa Logistics Park, they ended up not building as much either. Who knows if that's what will happen here, but that is the maximum that they approved for.
So who might be coming to those, to that area?
Pardon me?
Who might occupy it?
The applicant has indicated they have a tenant, but they weren't able to divulge the name.
Okay, for the 2.5 million?
Well, it's in two phases, so there's about a million square feet in the first phase in two buildings.
That's a very big warehouse.
Is that, does that project include a lot of solar paneling or solar energy on the rooftops?
Well, as a matter of fact, it does.
Oh, good. Well, I bring it up because the gentleman that was working the project a year or so ago was telling me that he had clients and he couldn't divulge, but that he really wanted to do a lot of solar energy and do a lot of, you know, making it something that might be able to charge a lot of batteries or something.
Well, as it turns out, the environmental laws in California, as we know, are constantly evolving towards more and more restrictive greenhouse gas emissions. And one of the best ways, as we all know, to do that is to go electric. And the cleanest electricity is the kind that comes from the sun. So as it turns out, we were just honing the mitigation measures, and solar panels kind of won the day.
And battery backup, I hope.
That would be sensible.
Oh.
Good way of putting it.
I don't know if SEQA requires sensible, but it.
Maybe the city could impose that as a condition beyond just the SEQA review. It could become a condition of approval that they include batteries.
Yeah, perhaps that comment will emerge in the public review comment period.
Okay, sounds like a good idea. Thank you.
Great. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. How are you going to solve this problem?
I do apologize. The biggest event is happening next week, which is the ribbon cutting for Devlin Road at 11:00 a.m. on May 25th. So I believe the invites have gone out and the public noticing has gone out. So they're in their final stages, it's still an active construction site. They're putting in the landscaping as of this week, but it probably won't be 100% complete by next week, but they're very close, so sorry about that, I totally forgot the big news.
What's the date and time again?
May 25th at 11:00 a.m.
Director Smithies, just between you and us, they're going to open it up a couple of days early, aren't they?
No. Hey, miracles can happen, but at this point in time.
All right, next speaker, please.
Good evening, I am back with my bi-weekly community update of what's going on around here in American Canyon. So from May 21st through the 22nd, there will be a native plant sale. On May 21st, the American Canyon Little League is having their home run hoedown from 5:00 to 9:30. Karina was already here, gave you all the fantastic details for that. On May 31st, we will be hosting our Memorial Day celebration at Veterans Park from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We encourage you all to come down and be a part of that celebration. And then from June 3rd to June 5th, we will be hosting and bringing back our community-wide yard sale. You can go online on our website to get all the details. You can pick up your sign downstairs at the Parks and Recreation Office. We'll be more than happy to give you one. And then the Seroptomists of American Canyon will be hosting a bongo night on June 4th. And on June 8th is going to be our first meet-me-in-the-streets for the summer season. So please support the chamber and our local businesses and come on down and have some fun. Thank you.
All these events are on the city calendar?
Yes, Mayor, they are, yes. It's going to be on our city website. You can go to our community event calendar and you can click on the little link that says the plant sale, and it will give you all the details of where that's located.
Very good, thank you. Anything further, Mr. Hawley?
That's all, Mayor, thank you.
All right. Wow, that's, stuff's happening in American Canyon. Good stuff, thank you. Wow, that's impressive. Okay, we'll move on now to Mayor-Council comments, committee reports, and after that, we'll take up future agenda items. Councilmember Washington, anything further to add to yours?
No, nothing to add.
Okay. Councilmember Joseph?
I don't have anything, what's on the report is there, but I had two other announcements. First, I wanted to remind everyone that Sunday, June 19th, from 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. at Main Street Park, we're having our first annual Juneteenth celebration, so make sure you're available. They'll, we'll have, you know, lots of adventures, and so that's important.
Putting that together, so there ought to be some great music.
Well, the Art Foundation is the fiscal sponsor, but it's Brendan Knight is doing all the work. We're just helping out.
Well, thank you, Arts Foundation for sponsoring.
That is true. And on the subject of the American Canyon Arts Foundation, we are bringing back Friday nights at the Plaza, at Canyon Plaza, although it's not all the nights, just the first Fridays of June, July, August, and September. So June 3rd will be the first one. You go to one of the restaurants at Canyon Plaza, eat dinner, then come out, listen to music. There could be some booths around, it'll be fun. And then repeat every month thereafter, so be there or be square.
Okay, thank you. I'm backwards. Councilmember Oro, anything to report?
The only thing I have to report is that my report is piling up and I'm going to submit it at the next council meeting. It's just going to be pages and pages of updates.
Okay, very good, thank you. Well, I was at the League of California Cities, City Leaders Conference this last week. Wow, tons of information, legislative, I will submit that in a report format. But a very nice thing happened as well, and good to work with people on that. We are, the Central Labor Council has a report here for us and some appreciations. And it's something from the California Legislature as well. Says California State Legislature Defect of Recognition Presented to American Canyon City Council. Labor Partner Award, Napa. On behalf of the people of our district, congratulations. Through your excellent leadership and deep local understanding, you have enhanced the lives of citizens of Solano County. We want to thank you for all your efforts you have put forth for the labor siblings. Your service, diligence, and commitment to excellence has been tremendous benefit for all the community. Bestowed May 14, 2022. So it's something for us to hang on the wall, in a prominent place where everybody can see it. And here is. And here is. Plaque.
And that is a good-looking plaque, by the way.
Let me take all this wrapping so that we can see it. Says Labor Partnership Award, Napa, American Canyon City Council, 2022. Central Labor Council. In addition from the United States Congress, certificate of special congressional recognition presented to American Canyon City Council in recognition of your labor partnership award for your support of labor rights and protections for all working people in the county of Napa, given at the 2022 Napa-Solano Committee Leadership Coalition Spring Salute on this 14th day of May, 2022, in Vallejo, California. Sorry. So council colleagues, I would compliment you, all of us, on our effort in that regard. You know, it's an important thing that we support our working families in the area. Okay, moving on with the agenda. Any future agenda items? Anything further on committee reports? If not, future agenda items, anything? Hearing none? Last stance? Okay. Then council, we have concluded our work for the evening. We are adjourned.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, we were going to adjourn with a moment of silence.
Yes, I'm sorry. Will you repeat that, please?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we all stay mindful and aware that we need to combat racism in our country. We're not that far off. We just recently had a 911 SWATing call, and if you're not sure what that is, is when you call the police and you ask the police to come out, and you suggest that there's an emergency going on. We don't have the resources or the time to deal with that type of stuff, but I would also say that, you know, just keeping the people in Buffalo in our prayers, just asking for a moment of silence, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. A moment of silence, please, for everyone. Thank you, our heartfelt empathies and sympathies go toward those people who suffered this tragic experience, and mindful to all of us that it's an issue that belongs to all of us. We can all make a difference in it. Thank you. Good night in American Canyon.